Okay, thank you everyone. I'd just like to thank you for coming back. I know it was a relatively quick break. If you could take your seats, we'll get going again. Thank you. All right. All right, about another minute and then I'm gonna get going. Just let people who are just checking in get settled. Please wrap up your conversations. All right, I'm gonna ask that you be seated. It's after 7 o'clock and I'd like to get going. We still have a number of things to do today. Please wrap up your conversations so we can get going. Thank you. Okay. So just as a reminder, we have adjourned. It is now past the hour of 7 o'clock when we adjourned to. I'm calling the March 23, 2024 Annual Town Meeting for Westboro back to order. I thank you for coming back. We all appreciate it. A couple of housekeeping items before we get going. We stopped at Article 21, so we will pick things up at Article 22. I wanted to make a couple of announcements. First of all, the National Honor Society's volunteers for babysitting are only gonna be here till around 8:45. So at around 8:45, if you could go pick your children up, that would be great. I understand that some of you might wanna stay longer. If you could entertain your children quietly in the gym and just run in here for votes, you can do that, or of course, you can go home. But the best we could do with Honor Society volunteers tonight was to get them till 8:45 or so. I also wanted to take a quick moment. Is Pete Allen here? Pete Allen, I wanted to recognize him for a quick point of personal privilege. So Mr. Allen, name, address, and your point, please.
Peter Allen, 8 Edward Dunway. Seeing that there are so few people here as opposed to at the earlier session, I'm sorry I didn't see an opportunity to ask for this earlier. But I just was contemplating, looking at what was happening with the Department of Youth and the Family Services and how much we have asked of them over more than the last year. That was over a year ago. They lost their director, and then they lost another clinician. And through all this period, and now a transition for it being outsourced, the current employees of Youth and Family Services have continued to serve the mental health needs of those in our community who need it. And I wanted to just recognize that and thank them because, again, through June of this year, we're asking that that continue. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Allen. Yes, on behalf of the voters, thank you to the Youth and Family Services for doing what they do. And thank you, Mr. Allen, for thinking to recognize them in that way. I appreciate that. Now that we're back in session, our next order of business from the warrant is Article 22, dealing with a roadway acceptance. We have a motion from Mr. Pann.
Chris Pann, Director of Public Works. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Pann, remarks, presentation.
Yep, so we'll just show a quick picture, but basically, a development has been completed. And when that happens, typically, the town inspects the site, looks at all the infrastructure that was installed, and then goes through a process to formally accept the road, which makes it a public road. So this is Ed Waters Way. The bottom left of the screen has the red dot, so it's in the southern part of the town near the reservoir. The right side of the screen shows the cul-de-sac that this road is. And all the green and blue dots, yellow dots, all that stuff represents infrastructure that we'll now own as part of this road. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Pann. At one point, I had heard there may have been talk of providing an amendment to remove eminent domain. Was that gonna happen or not? I just wanted to know what, because it'll affect the quantum of vote. No? Okay. Discussion on Mr. Pann's presentation or motion? Well, it says eminent domain in it, so that's... All right, seeing none, our action comes on Mr. Pann's motion, which was to move the articles printed in the warrant. Since it does have the words eminent domain, I've heard that there is no intention to use eminent domain, but just because it's there, so there's no complications with the Attorney General. I'm hoping there's a two-thirds vote, so I can declare a two-thirds vote. When the green light goes on, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Mr. Pann's motion. Pressing 2 is a vote opposed. Voting has begun. Voting has ended. We have 147, 147 in favor and 6 opposed. That is more than a two-thirds vote. It is almost unanimous, so the motion carries. Thank you. Next on the warrant, Article 23, Establishment of a Stabilization Fund by Assabett Regional Vocational Schools. Is Mr. George here? And if not, could someone make a motion on his behalf? And then we have... Could someone make a motion on Mr. George's behalf? Because I don't see him here. Mr. Duratt, would you like to read the motion for us, please? Thank you.
Steve Duratt, 23 Mill Road, Article 23. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Duratt. And I believe we have Mr. Hul here from the Assabett District, who is going to speak and make a brief presentation about the Assabett Stabilization Fund. Mr. Hul, since you're representing committee, if you'd like to stand down here, you can, but you don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do not have a presentation, but I will just quickly...
Could you just introduce your name and your role?
Sure. Ernest Hul, Superintendent Director at Assabett Valley Regional Vocational School District. Good evening. And tonight, we're looking to have the residents of Westboro approve a stabilization fund article, which will allow Assabett, under Mass. General Law Section 7116G 1/2, to establish a stabilization fund for capital improvements and for capital equipment purchases. The reason this has not come before, the community before, is that in the 50 years that Assabett has been in existence, we've been able to rely on out-of-district tuition, as the school was never fully enrolled by our in-district communities. In addition to that, we would also use any types of grants to offset any kind of capital improvement projects or capital equipment. As you know, that running a career in technical school, equipment can be in the cost of $40,000 to $200,000, depending upon what you're having for equipment that you're running. So that would be the purpose of the stabilization. In FY '24, this current year, we currently have zero out-of-district students in our freshman class, which is kudos to our communities for entrusting the education of your youngsters for career in technical education with Assabett. So that would be the purpose of the stabilization fund.
Thank you, Mr. Hul. Mr. George, all you missed was, Mr. Duratt made the motion your behalf, and then we were gonna ask for your remarks as well. Mr. George.
Sorry to have you late. I had to feed my 100-year-old mother-in-law. You don't wanna tick off your 100-year-old mother-in-law. Take my word for it. Anyway, move to print the article, move to move the article as printed. The issue that we're having is that up till now, as Ernie has said, we really haven't needed to go through this because we had enough money from out-of-district students to fund pretty much what we needed to without increasing the tax rate by adding more people to the budget. With the stabilization fund, we're able to actually put money in the fund and be planning for long-range expenses that would be prohibited if you were trying to do it on a single tax year. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer any.
Thank you, Mr. George. Thank you, Mr. Hul. Any comments, questions, advocacy, opposition? Seeing none, our action comes on Mr. Duratt's motion. It's shown on the screen. When the light goes green, voting 1 is a vote in favor of the motion. Pressing 2 is a vote opposed. Voting has begun. Voting has ended. We have a vote of 171 in favor and 5 opposed. That is well beyond a majority and well beyond a two-thirds vote. It's almost unanimous. The motion carries. And I wanna thank Mr. Hul. Many of you don't know, but Mr. Hul's actually been sitting in the hall since before 9 o'clock today, because we're unsure when he'll get here. So, Mr. Hul, thank you for your dedication to our town meeting. Next item of business is Article 24, Acceptance of Easements for the Boston Worcester Airline Trail. Ms. Nurse?
Yes. The article is printed in the warrant. It is going to be slightly different from that which I'm putting forward to you, so...
Can you just move the microphone so it's in front of your mouth, please? It's a little off to the side. Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, name and address too, Mrs. Nurse. Thank you.
Hazel Nurse, 80 Nurse Street. The change is, just for clarification, as the acceptance of the easements which we propose would be at no cost to the town. So I move the article as printed in the warrant with the following edits. Strike the words "purchase" and the words "and/or eminent domain."
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Remarks, presentation?
No, other than that, it's just these are basic easements, which we're looking to improve the recreational construction purposes for the B-Wall Trail. And there is a list of them, which I think you can put up for me. In various places in the town. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nurse. Any questions or comments? Just to make it clear, the amendment makes it that it reads up to the point to acquire by gift permanent or temporary easements. Therefore, this only requires a majority vote. Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. When the light turns green, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Ms. Nurse's motion with the changes in the warrant that she presented. Pressing 2 is a vote in opposition. Voting has begun. Voting has ended. We have 185, 185 in favor and 6 opposed. The motion carries. That is a nearly unanimous vote. Next is Article 25, dealing with sidewalk easements. Again, Ms. Nurse?
Hazel Nurse, 80 Nurse Street. There's similar changes to this article. These are easements which run along Otis Street, which will help complete the Otis Street project, which we're looking forward to having done.
Okay, and let me just get the things down. Yep.
So we will be striking the words "purchase" and the words "and/or eminent domain."
And then, and then the rest at the end, after the end further.
As well as the words at the end, which say "and/or," to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sum of money for the foregoing purposes and costs incidental or related thereto to take any action thereon. This clarifies that this will be done at no cost to the town.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Brief remarks or a map or anything? Joe?
Are there any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, our action comes on Ms. Nurse's motion, which is as printed in the warrant with the changes that were just up on the screen a moment ago, that essentially remove the purchase eminent domain and then the language at the end about potentially borrowing money. So, seeing no discussion, our action comes on that motion. When the light goes on, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Ms. Nurse's motion. Pressing 2 is a vote in opposition. Voting has begun. Voting has ended. We have 192, 192 in favor and 5 opposed. That is nearly unanimous, more than a majority, more than a two-thirds vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Nurse. Next Article, Article 26, Acceptance of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, regarding the senior tax work-off bylaw. Mr. Silverberg?
Mark Silverberg, 7 Weld Street, Board of Assessors. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Silverberg, thank you. Remarks or presentation?
I'm gonna ask John Steinberg to give you the background on this, and he'll take any questions, but I'll help as needed.
Thank you. Mr. Steinberg, just briefly remind us of your role, so we, for the record?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moderator, excuse me.
Oh, I thought I was gonna be chairman there.
I'm promoting you. John Steinberg, your chief assessor. This is essentially the senior tax work-off program. A few years back, the state allowed for us to change it up to $1,500, at which time the town adopted the $1,500 standard. As minimum wage increased, the town adopted, once again, the 125 hours to afford the workers to go beyond the $1,500. It got to $15 an hour, where it is currently at $1,875 for a worker. The state recently changed the law to allow for up to $2,000. Still compensating at minimum wage, so we are putting forward the opportunity to allow seniors to earn additional credit off their taxes, up to $2,000. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Questions, comments, proponents, opponents? Seeing none, our action comes on Mr. Silverberg's motion to move the article as printed in the warrant. When the light goes on, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of the motion. Pressing 2 is a vote opposed. Voting has begun. Voting has ended. We have 196, 196 in favor, and we have 3 opposed. That is almost a unanimous vote, certainly more than a majority. Thank you. Next on the warrant is Article 27, dealing with a Home Rule Petition Regarding Bidding Requirements Exemption Proposed by the Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Edinburgh?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Alan Edinburgh, 8 Nash Street. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Edinburgh, remarks?
That's a very quick, brief presentation here. I'm not gonna read the whole warrant article. It's a lot of legalese. If we go to the fourth slide. But effectively, there are three parts to this warrant article, if you wanna go two more. One more, okay? So a little bit of background. Financing, low-income housing, and construction. The Westboro Affordable Housing Trust has three primary options. One is to do direct contracting and building ourselves, generally not recommended in most situations. The third, I'll go to the third, it's the most common, is to transfer the property to a nonprofit or for-profit developer, effectively sell it or transfer it to them with a land development agreement, which requires them to build the housing we want within a certain period of time, or we get the land back and they lose all their money. The second option, which is less common but becoming more common, is to have a redevelopment corporation that's a joint venture between the trust and another entity, such as a housing authority or a private developer for a specific project. In this model, options 2 and 3 are eligible for low-income tax credit or LITC financing at the federal and state level. To qualify, however, the project must meet with federal regulations and must be fiscally competitive with private development. Next slide. And that's the challenge we're facing. If we follow the state procurement rules as written, we are in direct conflict with the eligibility for those low-income tax credits from both the federal government and the state. There's a conflict in Massachusetts general law. So what we're looking to do, and we are not asking to be exempt from competitive bidding, what we're asking is for exemptions in the aspects of the competitive bidding laws that conflict with the federal regulations and unnecessarily increase the costs for the trust. So we're asking to be exempt from specific aspects of Massachusetts general law, Chapter 149, which has all the procurement detail rules in it, to simplify the procurement process. The key element is it reduces the need for what's known as filed subcontractor bids. And this is, I apologize, it's a little technical. Basically, the general contractor for a project has to follow the same rules as the municipality, which means getting multiple bids in advance that get filed before they can actually file their bid back with us. It adds a lot of expense. And if you think about your own home, it's like having, and you wanna do remodel, and you hire a remodeling company, them going out to bid for the electrical work instead of using the company they always work with, and coming back with the three bids and saying, okay, which one do you want? Or, here's the one I'm gonna work with, because it's the lowest cost. It adds time, it adds a lot of labor. The second part of the trust waives the 30B requirement if we were going to transfer the property to a trust-controlled entity. So if we decide to do redevelopment project through a redevelopment corporation, so long as the trust has a majority control of that, this lets us transfer the property without having to put it out to bid, which is really awkward when you're selling a property, you know, trying to transfer a property or posting on the central register and having protest periods, things of that nature. The article does not exempt the trust or the project from prevailing wage or preferences. It's strictly around the bidding rules so that the developer who's bidding on the projects can provide a single complete competitive bid. And we can solicit multiple, and we will have to solicit multiple bids that way to do it. Next slide. So why are we doing it now? This also only covers two parcels of land. One is 45 High Street Extension that we talked about in the earlier article. The other is 6 Beach Street, which the Housing Trust acquired earlier this year, or late last year. The reason we're asking for it now is because the Home Rule petition first needs to go to the Select Board. They need to then request our delegation to submit it. It needs to get filed. At that point, it's 6 to 12 months for it to make it through, multiple readings, hearings, things of that nature. In parallel to pursuing this Home Rule petition and getting this authorization, we're gonna be working through project design, engineering, permitting, and financing, with the hope that we'll know by the time this makes it through the legislature whether or not we can use the low-income tax credit to help finance the projects. And it'll help reduce the overall project development time by about a year, which is, of course, will save a lot of, lot of money. So this is a little prescriptive in what we're trying to do, but we're trying to, you know, we've learned from watching the school building committees, that if you know the next step, and you start it early in anticipation of things going properly, that you can save time and money. And so we're trying to be proactive and keep this moving along. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Gilbert?
Hi, Donald Gilbert, 26 Charles Street. You know, I think that this is a valid and important effort that Mr. Edinburgh is working on in the trust. But I have to say that my feeling is that, like a lot of people, he wants to cut red tape and he wants to be competitive. But this is a public-private partnership, competing with the private market. And my concern is that down the road, he's gonna kinda cordon off his own little, he and the trust are gonna cordon off their own little autonomous function, functionary group, and be able to operate really, you know, unencumbered. And in some ways, that may be good for the town, and in some ways, that may not be good for the town.
Thank you. Just a reminder, trying not to say "he" or whatever, so you can say the Affordable Housing Trust or whatever. It's a group effort. So, Mr. Edinburgh?
So, by design, as you recall, when town meetings have graciously approved the trust unanimously, the trust is designed to operate semi-autonomously, as a more part of the town. We act as an agent of the town, but we're structured in a way that we can take advantage of opportunities without having to come to town meeting. We have oversight from the Select Board building to our operations based on certain thresholds. This, this change we're asking for is actually written into the Housing Bond Bill to make it permanent for housing trusts and housing authorities. It's pretty typical that housing authorities and housing trusts looking to do development projects make this request. Because it lowers, it lowers the cost, it still requires the competitive bidding, and it allows the process to scale to the size of the project we're doing. There's still oversight, and all of those other aspects, you know, still, still come into play. So yes, we're trying to cut red tape. We're not trying to hide or be secretive or manipulate things. We're looking to make sure that every dollar we use to construct or subsidize affordable housing is being used as efficiently as possible.
Thank you. Gentlemen, the microphone here. Name, address?
Adam Britters, 8 Fisher Street. So my wife and I were looking at this, and I'm trying to understand if there's anything that in the Mass. Constitution would be retched as unconstitutional, and will the Attorney General look at this as something that they would need to strike down later? I kinda wanna understand that, that perspective of it.
So the Attorney General will review this. I can tell you that, aside from the physical addresses of the property, this article is identical in wording to multiple articles... identical in wording to multiple articles from other housing authorities and housing trusts across the state that have successfully gone through the entire process, the most recent being the Act and Housing Authority, who's using this exemption to help finance the development of forty-three single-family townhomes.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see anything else. If that's the case, our action comes on Mr. Edinburgh's motion, which I believe was to move the article as printed in the warrant, which was up on the screen before. When the light goes green, as usual, pressing one is a vote in favor of Mr. Edinburgh's motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. Voting has ended. We have two hundred and three, two-zero-three in favor, sixteen opposed. That is almost unanimous and certainly more than a majority vote. Next on the warrant, Article twenty-eight, dealing with amending the general bylaws, Article seven, regarding the Finance Department. Mr. Keough.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Keough, five Yorkshire Circle. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
All right, can we put the, just, can we put the, do we have the version with the changes in it in case there's questions? And while, if you can put that up? If not, that's fine. Mr. Keough, any presentation, any comments?
Give me a second.
Just thought it might be helpful while we're talking about it for people to see what the changes are. You can begin making your remarks if you'd like, Mr. Keough.
All right, thank you. This bylaw currently vests the Finance Director responsibilities in the position of town accountant. This amendment removes the requirement that the town accountant serve as Finance Director, thereby splitting the position into two separate roles. The Finance Director is also responsible for managing three financial departments, including the treasure collector, the accounting office, and the assessing office. The Finance Director has a critical role in budget development, financial strategy, and debt and fund management, as well as understanding municipal finance law. As the town has grown, it is no longer prudent to expect the Finance Director to perform these responsibilities while also performing the statutory functions of a town accountant. The budget approved earlier today supports the changes outlined in this article.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Seeing none, our action comes on Mr. Keough's motion to move Article twenty-eight as printed in the warrant and as shown on the screen. As always, when the light goes green, pressing one is a vote in favor of the motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. Voting has begun. We have two hundred and nineteen, two-one-nine in favor, and we have twelve opposed. The motion carries, almost a unanimous vote. Next on the warrant, Article twenty-nine, dealing with amending the general bylaws, Article eighteen, regarding the Community Development Department. Mr. Johnson.
Ian Johnson, nine Burtis Adams Way. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, if possible, while you're making your remarks, perhaps Mr. Stockman can put up what the crossouts are or whatever. But if you want to explain while we're pulling that up, that'd be great.
Sure. Similar to what we just heard, the bylaw currently allows the Community Development Director to function as the Building Commissioner, and that's how the position is currently structured. This amendment removes the specific references to the Building Commissioner in favor of language that generally allows the town manager, charter bylaw, or town meeting to assign powers and duties to the Community Development Director. And as I said, this is consistent with what we just talked about and voted on for the Finance Department and Finance Director bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Looking around to see if there's any discussion, proponents, opponents? Seeing none, just see people getting seated. Your action comes on Mr. Johnson's motion, which is to move the article as printed in the warrant, which you can see in your Finance Committee meeting, Brooklyn, or in the warrant. When the green light goes on, as always, pressing one is a vote in favor of Mr. Johnson's motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. Voting has ended. We have a vote of two hundred and twenty-one, two-two-one in favor, in fifteen, one-five opposed. That is almost a unanimous vote, certainly more than a majority, certainly more than two-thirds. Let's see, our next article is Article thirty, dealing with demolition of historic or architecturally significant buildings presented by the Historical Commission. Mr. Hedrick, are you going to make the motion, presentation? Okay, thank you.
Christian Hedrick, thirty-eight Glenn Street.
Could you just aim the mic up a little since your call? Thank you.
Christian Hedrick, thirty-eight Glenn Street, Chair of the Historical Commission here in Westboro.
You can read the motion if you'd like.
Okay, I'll just read it. I move that the article as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. And now we can wait for the presentation.
I don't have a presentation.
Oh, okay, in that case, make your remarks then.
Okay. This is a very...
Thought Mark was working on one.
This is a very simple, very, very minor, almost administrative change, we're just changing something in what's called the demolition bylaw. This affects how much time we have to try to assess or do a survey of a particular property that has had a demolition permit filed for it. So, when somebody files a demolition permit to tear a building down in Westboro, if the building is of a certain age, the demolition permit has to come to us first, the Historical Commission. We evaluate it, sometimes we have to do a survey if we don't have one, which I talked about earlier. And what was previously existing was, we had fifteen days to make this decision. And we're a volunteer board, we don't meet every two weeks, we meet once a month, so sometimes it's a little bit difficult to try to get us all together and make a decision within fifteen days. So, we're asking for thirty days so we can try to be a little bit more reasonable about it. Sometimes it requires doing a survey, so that also plays into it, so I'm happy to. Take any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hedrick. Any deliberation on Article thirty? Seeing none, our action will come on Mr. Hedrick's motion to move the article as printed in the warrant. As always, when the light goes on, pressing one is a vote in favor of the motion, pressing two is a vote opposed. Voting has begun.
Okay. Thank you.
Voting has ended. We have two hundred and thirty-four, two-three-four in favor, and nine opposed. The motion carries, that is well more than a majority and almost a unanimous vote. Our attention now turns to Article thirty-one, dealing with amending the general bylaws, Article thirty-two, which is the bylaws Article thirty-two, not warrant Article thirty-two, about wetlands protection. And now we get to see Mr. Cunningsburg up front. So, Mr. Cunningsburg.
Andrew Cunningsburg, three Smith Street, Chair of Westboro Conservation Commission. I move the article as printed in the warrant. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, yeah. Any remarks? Yeah. You want to go straight to...do you have any remarks about summarizing, or you want to just go to questions?
Well, we have Jennifer Miller, Conservation Director, who has a short presentation if people want to understand the context of what we're doing here. Do people want to hear the presentation?
Yeah, just do a quick raise of hands if you want to hear, if you want to see the presentation.
Okay.
I think there's enough that we should spend a few minutes on.
Then...
Thank you. Thank you for giving the voters the show.
I turn it over to Jennifer.
Okay. Ms. Miller again.
Thank you, everybody. Jennifer Miller, Conservation Director. So, just a few quick slides to kind of give you a sense of what we're looking to do. The reason we don't have it in the warrant article is a strikeout, but we have the revised version, or the amended version, in the warrant, is because we did a lot of restructuring, so the content has stayed very much the same, but we restructured it, so it was a lot easier to understand. We added in tables where we could, instead of long paragraphs of information. We moved performance standards, which is how you go about proposing a project in different types of wetland areas, to the regulations, which is really where it belongs, not in the bylaw. And so, it shortens that document as well. So, just a little bit of background, the bylaw was adopted in two thousand and eight. Typically, those are updated in most communities every ten years or so. Ours hasn't been updated since it was originally adopted in two thousand and eight, so it's a little overdue. As I mentioned earlier, the original bylaw is pretty lengthy, it's pretty wordy as well, and can be confusing, especially if it's not in terms of the technical terms that we have in there. If you're not familiar with them, they can be kind of confusing, and we want to make sure that everybody can look at this document and easily understand it. We had a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission that worked over several months to revise the document and kind of really tease out what should stay in the bylaw and what should move to the regulations. The final draft went through a public hearing process through the Conservation Commission's meetings, so it was publicly noticed, and the whole commission got a chance to take a look at it and make comment as well. And then, just a last note, that we're obviously in the process of updating our regulations as well. So, again, performance standards, definitions, things that we took out of the bylaw will make their way into the revised regulations. And that'll go through its own public hearing process through the Conservation Commission. So, we just put in a couple of examples, so you can see in this slide here, this is an instance where we took out kind of a wordy paragraph and instead have a table that really summarizes the information much more succinctly. And then, in these two examples, the first page shows, on your left, shows some performance standards, again, different, depending on where you're proposing to do work, in different type of wetland areas, you have different performance standards. Those were taken and moved to the regulations. And then, finally, just an example of some definitions on the second page, those were moved to the regulations as well. And that's it.
That's it. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Any questions?
Any questions? You coming up? Okay. We'll wait for Mr. McManus to introduce himself. Oh, okay. Mr. McManus, name, address, remarks.
Joe McManus, eight Isaac Miller Road.
Can you just aim the microphone up a little, please? Thank you.
Joe McManus, eight Isaac Miller Road. Broadly in favor of environmental protection, but I'm really not understanding, and our state has a reputation of being a pretty strict state in terms of environmental protection, and I don't understand why the town has to be more stringent than the state is, and could you explain where some of those differences are? Thank you.
Sure.
So, my understanding of the question is why does Westboro have to be more stringent than state law, and to explain some of the approach. Thank you.
Sure. So, pretty typical of most, I should say, many communities in Massachusetts, the Wetlands Protection Act and three-ten CMR-ten, which is the regulations enacted through the Wetlands Protection Act, they're broad and give some basic purview to the Conservation Commissions throughout Massachusetts in each municipality, but most municipalities find it's important to have additional, more stringent local protections. So, as an easy example, for instance, under the Wetlands Protection Act, or really through the regulations, anything within a hundred feet of what we call a bordering vegetated wetland, which is basically a wetland near a river, pond, or stream, anything within a hundred feet would get reviewed by the Conservation Commission. The Commission doesn't dilute that in any way with the local bylaw and regulations, but just says that there are specific standards within that hundred feet. So, for instance, Westboro has a twenty-foot to fifty-foot no-touch, no-disturb within that first hundred feet, and then a fifty-foot nostructure. And so, depending on the type of wetland, there are different varying degrees of protection. Some of them are very much the same through the Wetlands Protection Act and the Conservation Commission local bylaw. So, for instance, under the State Wetlands Protection Act, there's a two-hundred-foot riverfront area, so any stream that flows perennial, meaning year-round, has two-hundred feet of review. It doesn't mean you can't do anything in that two-hundred feet, it just means anything within two-hundred feet has to be reviewed. Our local regulations have that very same standard. So, sometimes it's more stringent, sometimes it's very similar to the state.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. George.
Paul George, nineteen Robin Road. Years ago, the DPW attempted to do something similar, which made it almost impossible for you to do anything even to your lawn, because the restriction was five thousand square feet. So, what's the restriction here?
Okay. I think the restriction you're talking about has to do more with a stormwater bylaw for DPW. So, historically, DPW and the Conservation Commission have been the stormwater authority, and that regulates what you can do within your lawn, and making sure that you have recharge, and if you're using over a certain amount of water, that it's regulated, or a certain amount of disturbance. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, or three-ten CMR, it's up to five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five square feet of wetlands can be disturbed, but then you have to replicate it, and you have to replicate it on the same parcel or sending parcel into a greater degree. So, you have, if you're going to take, you have to replace more. And so, it gets a little bit different, though, that has to do with take of wetlands.
Let me ask you a pointed question then, okay? I am three hundred feet from the Asseret River swamp area on Robin Road, okay? It's not necessarily a downward grade, but I suspect if I wanted to replant my lawn and completely dislodge the area, I'd have to worry about the wetlands, because runoff would go in that direction. Is that something I'd have to worry about?
Ms. Miller?
So, yes and no. I don't want to speak to the stormwater aspect, because that gets us a little bit off-topic, but as far as the wetland regulations under our local bylaw, anything within two hundred feet, so if you're saying three hundred, then no, that actually falls outside the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And under both the state and local regulations, it's worded as unless and until. So, let's say you wanted to redo your lawn, and we had a large rain event like today, and you left the soil disturbed, and you have a downward slope, and all that new, pretty loam that you put in ends up going down to the river, then you have impacted the resource area, and there's a consequence to that. So, we do things like have erosion controls that get put in place. So, you wouldn't need to file with the Commission if you're three hundred feet away necessarily. It's actually, and actually, maintaining your existing lawn is an exempt minor activity. It would come to us for review, and we would let you know whether it's exempt or not.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert.
Yeah, Donald Gilbert, twenty-six Charles Street. Can you define for me what a vernal pool is?
So, it depends on which literature you're looking at. Under our local bylaw, it's basically a depression, so much like a pond, except for it's vernal, meaning it exists in spring and summer, and it typically would dry up for a portion of that spring and summer, unless we have a really wet summer like last year. And the idea is that because it's not a pond, and it does dry up, that a fish can't survive there, and therefore, the fish don't eat all the reptile and amphibian eggs. And so, reptiles and amphibians really rely on those vernal pools, and we give them extra protection in Massachusetts.
Okay, can I follow up with that?
Yes, quick follow-up, please.
Yeah, I just, separate from stormwater, I'm concerned about runoff when it comes to wetlands. I mean, definitely the Cape has had a lot of problems with nitrogen from fertilizer and things getting into the water, screwing up with the fish and stuff. EVs, my understanding is that EVs, because they're heavier, they actually wear down the tires more rapidly, and the asphalt, which I think is also made out of some parts of tires, but that the toxins in the tires and in the road...
Yeah, wait, I'm waiting to see if he gets to how this ties into vernal pools. Let's try to tie it in.
End up in our wetlands. And I just, is there any research in your purview around this issue? Because it's definitely having impact, is what I've read, so.
Do you want me to answer?
Do you want a response? Yes, Ms. Miller.
Okay.
You don't have to, but you may.
So, as far as what we're proposing tonight, just to kind of get us back on track, we're proposing to amend the bylaw. And again, what you're speaking of would be more of a performance standard, and performance standards are relegated to the regulations.
Thank you. I'm going to go over to this microphone. Name, address, please?
Elizabeth Hawes, one-three-six...
Can you just, can you get closer and tilt the mic up?
Hold on.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Hawes, one-three-six Upton Road.
What, it was thirty-six Upton Road?
One-three-six.
One-three-six.
One-three-six. 136.
Okay, thank you.
The question is, we abut, we're on the other side of the Mass Pike, on the Upton side, so we abut a creek that is way more than 300 feet from the lawn. However, out in there that we own the land, it's full of invasives. So I have to call you before we do a poll, or do you just run by and go, yeah, rip out that bittersweet, it's okay, or whatever else we have? Because we technically are disturbing the land, but the state says get them out if you can.
So if you're doing work within your existing landscaped areas, that is not subject to additional permitting. It's an exempt minor activity under the state regulations.
It's not landscaped. I mean, we've left it...
No, wait, yeah, can we, wait, 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 wait. Remember, this isn't a give and take. Go through the, so Ms. Miller, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Follow-up question, please.
It's not landscaped, though. It's just the creek and the land that we own. But because of the nature of it, all the invasives get in there, and then they run toward our yard.
Sure. So if you're looking to do, if you're within 200 feet of the riverfront...
Yeah.
So if you're near the Asseret and you're within 200 feet of the bank, then you would need to at least reach out to our office. We would discuss it with you and decide if you need a filing with us. There are different types of filings. Some are meant to be less of a burden to the smaller residential projects, especially if you're looking to do habitat restoration. So we would work with you and get you through that process if you do need a permit, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Kenningsburg.
Yeah, Andrew Kenningsburg, 3 Smith Street, Conservation Commission. I just want to help clarify a couple of things. The bylaw just allows the Conservation Commission to write regulations. We have a set of regulations. I'll have to admit, I helped write the original bylaw, so whatever defects it had, well, you appointed me. Same with the regulations, which we're going to review, revise, and also have public hearings on so people can comment on them. So, you know, what we did in the regulations, as Jennifer says, is we have setbacks. And just so you know, we have never denied a project because of the setbacks that we have put in place. In fact, I've heard that developers have said it's great to have the certainty, so there's no back and forth about where we can put a building, where we can put stormwater detention, and so on. So, and the regulations, we have certain standards for submittals, things that we're going to need to change in the regulations. I had the brilliant idea way back in 2010. Well, they got to be submitted to the Conservation Commission on a CD. Does anybody even know what a CD is anymore? So these are the things that we're going to be updating and changing, but the intent of the bylaw right now does not change at all. It's reorganized and written much, much better than I did. Okay, just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to this microphone back here.
Motion to vote, move the vote.
Okay, can you just give your name and address, please?
Felicia Batesman, 27 West Street, move to vote.
Okay, so you're moving the question.
Yes.
The purpose of moving the question is that's fancy words for terminating debate, which means we go to a vote on terminating debate. Let me just check, we have been at this at least 15 minutes. We've heard questions very specific on both sides. We've heard questions about definitions, so I'll allow the motion to stand. So now we're voting on terminating debate, not on Mr. Kenningsburg's motion. So when the light goes on, pressing one means we terminate debate, and we move straight to the main motion. Pressing two means we continue debate. And I will note that there's one gentleman standing at the microphone right now. Voting has ended. We have 268, 268 in favor, 34 opposed of terminating debate. That is more than a two-thirds vote. Debate is ended. We now move to act on Mr. Kenningsburg's main motion, which is to move the article as printed in the warrant. When the light goes on this time, we are voting on Mr. Kenningsburg's motion. So when the light goes on, pressing one is a vote in favor, pressing two is a vote opposed. Soon as they're ready, it takes a while to clear out the votes. Voting has begun. Again, pressing one is a vote in favor of Mr. Kenningsburg's original motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. As a general bylaw to the town, this requires a majority vote. Voting has ended. We have 290, 290 in favor, 20 opposed. That is certainly more than the majority vote, almost unanimous. Next on the warrant, we have Article 22, amending the zoning bylaws and zoning map related to the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. Mr. Silverberg.
Mark Silverberg, Chair, 7 Wells Street, Chair of the Planning Board. Article 32, I move the article as printed in the warrant with the following amendments. Insert the following sentence at the end of Section 4.11B 3. Uses allowed as of right in the MCMOD shall not be subject to the provisions of Section 6.1 and shall not require a separate special permit under Section 4.3 if located within the Aquifer and Watershed Protection District. Also, insert the following sentence at the end of Section 4.11C 14. A residential dwelling unit shall not be age-restricted or restricted on the number of bedrooms, the size of bedrooms, or the number of occupants. Also, insert the following sentence at the end of Section 4.11E. Site plan review for as-of-right uses in the MCMOD may not be denied. And insert the following sentence at the end of Section 4.11L 3B. If EOHLC determines in writing that the town has not shown this 20% requirement to be feasible, at least 10% of the housing units constructed or such greater percentage as approved by EOHLC in writing shall be affordable housing units.
Okay, Mr. Silverberg, before you continue, do you need to report out on a hearing from the planning board?
I do. I have, on Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, after two public hearings, the planning board unanimously voted five to zero to recommend that the town meeting approve Article 32 to amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map to allow multifamily zoning by adding a new Section 4.11 and establishing multifamily zoning overlay districts on the zoning map.
Thank you. Just one other comment before your presentation. I don't know if any of you saw, at the bottom, it said that this was a majority vote. For those of you longtime town meeting people, it used to always be that zoning bylaws were two-thirds. However, a few years ago, the legislature changed it so that towns for specific types of zoning, especially related to multifamily housing, now has reduced the quantum of vote for that particular classification of zoning bylaws to majority vote. So that's why it's a majority vote, in case that comes up. Mr. Silverberg, your turn.
So I'm going to ask Art Director of Planning Jenny Jengris to do a presentation on this. I'm sure you've all heard about, well, maybe not all of you, but most of you have heard about the MBTA Zoning Act and Milton's objection to it and so forth. It's a pretty complex issue. These changes that we proposed tonight came from Attorney General Review, who has suggested that we add this language to ensure that EOHLC, who has final approval on this, will actually approve what I hope you vote for tonight. So, you know, a little bit different than what we originally published in the warrant, but we think those changes will make it more likely to pass in EOHLC review. The long and short of it is, we don't expect to see any development as a result of this zoning change. So I'll let Jenny present this.
Thank you, Mr. Silverberg. Ms. Jengris.
Thank you, Mark. Jenny Jengris, the Director of Planning. Also, again, this is the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. And I'm sure a lot of you have heard about MBTA communities in the news, but just a brief overview on what it is. So there's a total of 177 communities that are classified as MBTA communities and are subject to the requirements of Section 3A of the zoning act. Section 3A requires that an MBTA community has to provide for at least one district where multifamily housing is permitted as of right. And then the state or EOHLC, which is formerly known as DHCD, made the deadline to comply as December 31st, 2024. So what is as-of-right zoning? That's a big question that we usually get. As-of-right zoning essentially means that a development can proceed without a special permit or a variance or any other special permission from the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. However, a building permit is still required, and it still is reviewed by departments as it normally would be. The bylaw can still require a site plan review, which we do in most instances for planning board applications, and so it still goes through the same review process. It's a public hearing process with the planning board. Abutters are notified, but the planning board cannot impose any unreasonable requirements or delays on the project. So it's essentially the difference between a discretionary permit and a non-discretionary permit. And just to reiterate, this is just a set of rules. It's not permitting an actual development to happen. This is just the zoning set of rules. So Westboro actually has quite a bit of multifamily housing compared to other communities in Massachusetts, and these are the districts that we allow for multifamily by special permit, and then we allow in one zoning district by right. So there are four, I'm sorry, five districts where we allow it by special permit. The Gateway, the Downtown Planning Overlay District, our Transit Oriented Village, which is near our commuter rail, a mixed-use district, and our Senior Overlay District. So this is just an overview of Westboro's current housing stock compared from 2012 to 2022. So in 2022, 57% of our housing stock was single-family units. 33% is multifamily with five or more units, which is higher than Worcester County and Massachusetts. So we're doing pretty good comparatively there. And from 2012 to 2022, multifamily structures in Westboro actually saw a pretty fast growth compared to other types of housing by adding 715 units over that span of 10 years. So why do we have to do this as Westboro? Well, none of our zoning districts that we allow for multifamily meet the state's new requirements. Again, the state's requirements are that it has to be as-of-right. We can require a site plan review, but we cannot require a special permit. It is very important to note that if we do not comply with the requirements from the state under 3A, that we become ineligible for grant programs, including our Housing Choice Community Grants, MassWorks Infrastructure Grants, and then other local capital project funds. And I believe there was a slide in the beginning that showed the grants that we've received in the past year, which is in the millions of dollars. So we receive a lot of grant money for different projects, current ones. The Otis Street Improvement Project, that is funded by grants. The B-Wall Multi-Use Trail is funded by grants. We have also other sidewalk and crosswalk improvement projects that are funded by grants. And then our downtown development plan that we're working on was received. We were able to hire a consultant as a result of grant funding. So essentially, the Attorney General has also said that this law is not optional. So the compliance process we went through, there was actually a working group that had been working on establishing where to find suitable locations for the zoning districts since, I believe, 2022. An action plan was submitted to EOHLC in January 2023, so we were in compliance there. Again, the complying zoning bylaw needs to be approved by the Attorney General December 31st, 2024. We also received a technical assistance grant from Mass Housing Partnership to hire a consultant, RKG Associates, who finalized our compliance model and also completed an economic feasibility analysis, both of which are on our website if you're interested in reading. So they tested the districts and the zoning rules, such as maximum setbacks, the height, all of which I'll get into a little more detail. And then the bylaw was drafted by using the model from the state and then with input from our consultant as well. So the state has specific compliance requirements based on the number of housing units that we have, which is 8,334. So they require 15% to be the minimum multifamily unit capacity, so that is 1,250 for the number of units. There's also other requirements that we had to consider when looking at where we're going to put the districts, including 20% had to be located in the station area, and then the minimum gross density needed to be 15 dwelling units per acre. So after doing lots of math and looking at the zoning map, we determined three different districts, which I'll go through in more detail. So District 1 is on Gleason Street, and it's actually an existing multifamily development, Westboro Village, and so that would be the first district. The second district, we're calling Turnpike Road A, which is Park Westboro. So it's already built out, it has multifamily there. And then District 3, we're calling Turnpike Road B, which is Arrive, the apartment buildings on Turnpike Road there. So when we looked at the modeling and compliance, again, lots of math, we had to also look at the zoning parameters, such as the lot size required, the building height, lot coverage, setbacks, and things like that. And we took what we already require under our existing zoning for those areas where multifamily is currently allowed by special permit, and we just applied it here. So you'll see, the building height is at four stories. All of those developments, except for Arrive, have four stories. Arrive has eight stories. But under our current bylaw, it is required that you cannot build any taller than four stories. Arrive was built prior to that zoning being put into place. So at the end, with all those calculations considered, we found that we do comply with testing all of those zoning parameters, and there's enough land and unit capacity within the half-mile transit station area to exceed the specific area requirements. So the impact on Westboro, well, these existing units, the ones Westboro Village, Park Westboro, and Arrive, they're all included in the districts, and they do count towards the number of units that we need to have. So we do not expect that there'll be an increase in Westboro's housing stock due to that existing housing being located in those districts. And at the same time, we, as a planning department and planning board, we're exploring other opportunities to expand housing options and diversify our housing stock. So one thing we're doing is a housing production plan, where we're looking at the demographics and the housing need projected in the next five years. We're taking a look at our zoning and our requirements under the special permit process. And we already have, you know, multifamily applications in front of the planning board as well, seeking, again, multifamily development.
Can you conclude your remarks, please? You're over time, so.
Nope. Thank you.
You can leave that up if you'd like.
Okay.
If you want to leave that slide up. And if it becomes an issue during discussion, we'll come back to it. Okay?
Yeah, no, this is, this is the end.
Okay, great, okay.
The amendment explanation.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to Mr. Silverberg's motion, which was as printed in the warrant with the long list of changes that were made. When the green light goes on, voting will begin. Voting one is in favor of Mr. Silverberg's motion. Voting two is a vote in opposition. Voting has ended. Do we have scouts here tonight, or someone with a roving microphone? If there's a roving microphone around, could someone bring it down toward the select board, please? Okay, we have a vote of 283, 283 in favor and 15 opposed. Okay, we have a vote of 283, 283 in favor and 15 opposed. The motion carries that is two-thirds vote, even though I believe only a majority was required. Do we have a roving microphone? Did we figure out? If not, perhaps the select board can use the cable and offer it to them, because from now on, their citizens petitions and the main motion will be being made by their... Mr. Conklin, you're welcome to use that microphone if you'd like, if there isn't a floating microphone. We now turn our attention to Article 33, dealing with funding an Afro-Caribbean festival. Can somebody allow Mr. Conklin to use that microphone unless and until we... What? Yeah, as long as you're not... Yeah, right here is fine. Yeah.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,500 for the annual Afro-Caribbean Festival at Bay State Commons Celebration to be extended by the Westboro Afro-Caribbean Festival at Bay State Commons Committee under the direction of the select board to be held at the end of August or beginning of September 2024.
Thank you. Comments, remarks, presentation?
There's no presentation. We just couldn't make a comment that it's our understanding that a large, significant portion of the population of new Americans here to town may be from Haiti. I believe it was Mr. Edinburgh that mentioned that in a meeting. We don't know that for sure, but we thought this might be kind of a fun idea to do something like this for our new members of our community.
Okay, thank you. Is that your initial remarks? Okay. Do the select board want to make a comment about this? You don't have to. I just, I had made a note that you may want to. You're all set? Not yet. Okay. I had heard that Ms. Spring, Ms. Spring wanted to make a comment. Ms. Spring?
Really tall for me.
Can you aim it down or...? No, not really.
We got it.
Just use your loud voice. Thank you.
I have that.
Name and address.
Carolyn Spring, 12 Dear Slayer. I am a longtime member of the Westboro Cultural Council, and I am not in support of this article because I am requesting that the proponents, when they have a budget and a venue and a date, that they go to the Westboro Cultural Council website and apply for a grant. We give grants for this type of festival and have for many, many years. There's no reason to have to use taxpayers' money through town meeting for it. I'm providing you with an alternate funding source for a worthwhile event. So for that reason, I am requesting that everybody vote no on this article because there's alternate money available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spring. We'll hop over to this microphone here. Felicia, I forgot your last...
And thank you for that offer.
Wait, 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 wait. Did you want to respond to that, Mr. Conklin?
No, I just said thank you for the offer.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We'll take you up on it.
Okay. Felicia, I've forgotten your last name.
Vatesman, 27 West Street.
Thank you.
I watched the two-hour town meeting where, not town meeting, sorry, select committee meeting where you guys presented in front of the board. At the time, the select committee had questioned if you were working with anyone on this Afro-Caribbean festival. I think you guys had reached out to a DJ. Have you guys reached out to anyone in the Afro-Caribbean community since then? Has anyone, is there like a community advocate that you're working with for this bill? And also, have you reached out to anyone besides a DJ to get more information on what the cost of an Afro-Caribbean event would cost?
Great question. We're new to this, so we want to continue the process and get answers to all those questions.
So is that a no?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks, just clarifying.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the gentleman at this microphone back here. Name, address, et cetera.
Jonathan Rappaport, 7 Brady Road. I would urge folks to vote against this. I think multicultural events are really wonderful and something that should be promoted, but not at taxpayer expense. And I don't believe if we do this particular festival, then we should be funding a Diwali Festival or a Purim Festival or something to celebrate Ramadan or any other cultural group that lives in the town. So I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Any more discussion? I see none. Therefore, your action comes on Mr. Conklin's motion, which is to move that the town transfer from free cash, $3,500 and all the other words in there. When the light goes green, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion. Pressing 2 is a vote opposed. Voting is begun. Voting is ended. We have a vote of 25 in favor, 25, and 338 opposed. The motion is defeated. And now we're going to enter in for, again, I'm going to just take a brief moment for those of you who weren't here back at around 9:20, 9:30 this morning. The voters at the meeting adopted a rule of the meeting that for any non-binding article, which means an article for which there is no binding town meeting action, debate is limited to 15 minutes, so we don't have to wait for debate to be terminated. I want to emphasize there's no need to fill the 15 minutes. My role as moderator is to provide opportunity for deliberation. It's not to make you deliberate. So you'll notice a number of the articles after the, we came back from the break, went by very quickly. However, this rule of the meeting was adopted when I offered it in request to some voters who had asked that they would know about how much time we were spending on these. My implementation of that 15 minutes is that we're going to have seven and a half minutes per side. Each side can choose whether people who have approached me in advance can use up to a three-and-a-half-minute presentation. And then each speech is limited to two minutes rather than our usual 10-minute presentation versus two and a half-minute speeches. Or if a side chooses to not make a three-and-a-half presentation, they can use up to two-minute speeches until their seven-and-a-half minutes of the 15 minutes is done. So we're going to have the timers who are running the stoplights are now going to time the presentations to be either two or three-and-a-half minutes, the initial ones, and then speakers at 2. And then I'm using my trusty phone, which lets me have proponent and opponent countdowns for the seven-and-a-half minutes. And so that's how we're going to do it. So I just want to let you know, for the articles here on out, town council has reviewed them. I've looked at them. They all are resolutions. Resolutions are non-binding, sense of the meeting, sense of the voters. And most of those, even if they weren't resolutions, are beyond the scope of town meetings authority. So that's why these are considered non-binding. And I just wanted to say that. If anybody has any questions as we go, we're going to do what we can. I just wanted to let you know those are the rules from here on out, since I think some of you weren't here this morning. So with that said, we move on to Article 34 about the removal of LGBTQ plus iconography from schools. Mr. Conklin?
Boyd Conklin, 8 Water Street. I move that the town meeting supports a resolution to remove LGBTQ plus iconography from Westboro schools.
Mr. Conklin, remarks?
No group should have preferential advertising in our schools.
Is that it? Okay. All right. I was asked to note here that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee at a meeting earlier in the year voted 4 to 0 to 0 to oppose this article. I didn't know if the schools were going to give an opportunity to speak about this. Any need to? I've got one other person before you missed it. You want to speak too? Oh, you're reporting a vote. Okay. Can you use the podium and report your vote if it's a town committee? Thank you.
The Board of Health, Nathan Walsh, 3 Matthew Drive. The Board of Health voted 3 to 0, all in favor of the opposition of this article. The Board of Health believes that the LGBTQ plus iconography is potentially beneficial to the mental health and well-being of the students at the school and that the decisions of what should and should not be displayed should be left to the judgment of the school department and the school committee.
Thank you. Do the schools want to make any comments? Ms. Bach? And then Ms. Hensley, you had requested ahead of time. Are you still here and are you at a microphone? What?
She can share my time. We can go.
Oh, okay. Is Ms. Hensley here? Oh, I didn't see you sitting down there. Thank you.
Amber Bach, 10 Arch Street, you're superintendent of schools. I'm going to give you a short presentation. They say a picture is worth a thousand words. Every picture I'm going to show you was created by art students in collaboration with departments for over the last 10 years. These are displayed throughout the hallways of the Westboro High School, painted by the hands of your students as they've studied history and the world around them. And they've selected and represented those images, and students pass those in the hallways, celebrate them, enjoy them, talk about them. We have an amazingly talented student body. They have the capacity to take in a gigantic amount of information with skill and critical thinking and reflective listening and empathy. They are really amazing people. They do not fear discussion. They welcome the opportunity to be inclusive, and they represent the Westboro Public Schools exceptionally well. I remain immensely proud when we send them out into the world, that they can live with anyone, work with anyone, and thrive. You should be impressed by the civics work that we do and the way we live in our schools with an amazing faculty. These are displayed throughout all of our hallways. I'm happy to let you tour anytime. My concern is that, as you watch these images, what you recognize is that this serves as an appropriate metaphor for how this article has selectively misrepresented a singular set of images as indoctrination, when in reality our schools are full of extensive images that embrace knowledge, empower learning, and demonstrate that we welcome all students in the Westboro Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Bach. Please, please, no, please. I will not allow that. Please don't do it. Your power is your vote. We're trying to do these quickly. Wait for your vote, please. As I said, I would alternate between pros and cons. We've heard reports out, and we've heard an opponent. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the motion? Of Mr. Conklin's motion? Seeing none, I will recognize another person who asked to... Mr. George, you want to speak in favor of the motion?
What I wanted to do is I wanted to say, Paul George, 19 Robin Road. What we should be preaching is tolerance, not a particular group, but just tolerance.
Mr. George, are you speaking in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion?
Well...
It doesn't sound it, so I just want to know if you are.
I'm not speaking in favor. What I'm speaking on is that...
No, the way I said I would run the rules is anyone who wants, I'm going to alternate between people speaking in favor and people who are not speaking in favor. And I understand there's a very wide range of what's not in favor, but if you don't want to speak in favor of the main motion exactly as it is, I'm going to go back to Ms. Hensley, who I said I would recognize. And then, so you may speak when it comes back, if you'd like. Ms. Hensley? Oh, is there a microphone? Oh, wait, maybe you can use the finance committee microphone. I thought you had one. I'm sorry. I saw your phone and I thought it was a microphone.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Mr. Moderator, thank you. I'm Jody Hensley, 39 North Street, and I oppose this article. I come before you as a former school committee member, a past member of the advisory finance committee, most importantly, as a mother in an LGBTQ plus family that is part of this community. I generally aim for the higher ground when making public remarks. I work to avoid the law of forces and instead try to focus on light and love. For instance, as chair of the school committee in 2016, I addressed the Westboro High School graduating class. It was a very hopeful time. Westboro was celebrating its 300th anniversary, and my remarks included the values that you learned here in the Westboro Schools can serve as your compass points, your true north. The core values here include respect and gratitude, tolerance and perseverance, caring and courage, generosity and self-reflection. And I reminded them of one additional truth. A peaceful heart is a gift that you take with you into the world, and you can touch people in positive ways when your heart is in the right place. My heart has not been peaceful during this time. Open town meeting is something I've long considered a sacred opportunity to serve as the local legislature, late sure deliberating on business, budget, bylaws of the community. This year, recent public meetings and this annual town meeting have been hijacked to give platform to what appears to be, me, to be personal agendas and culture war attacks. We've lost something here, and I just really hope, in fact, I know we can get it back. The abuse of the process in Westboro has brought us a toxic brew of laments, attacking what is good, what is kind and joyful and nurturing, especially in our schools. And lastly, I ask that the proponent stop abusing and harassing us LGBTQ families and allies by using slurs and innuendos which openly defame us. What is grooming? That word that has been used over and over and over again in the last few, in last year. Look up the definition of grooming. Grooming is an act of befriending a child for the purpose of molesting them. Just the most horrific, disgusting, and vile accusation that you can be thrown at you. Grooming describes the behavior of sexual predators. Lately, that accusation has been thrown at those who support LGBTQ rights, including teachers and school committees. Grooming has become an incendiary buzzword weaponized in the fight over LGBTQ rights and legislation. That, my friends, is the agenda here, a political attack with homophobic origins. False accusations of pedophilia are defamation, and defamation is not protected speech, not under the First Amendment and not under Massachusetts town meeting law. Furthermore, being gay is but one part of what an amazing LGBTQ plus person is. It's kind of like being left-handed. To reduce a full person to only one part of their full humanity and judge that part as threatening or dangerous is shameful and it is hurtful. As a parent, my gay child was fully nurtured here, highly involved in school and civic service in Westboro. I never, ever thought that I'd have to go out of my way to defend my child here. The proponent's language of slurs and attacks on us is very, very personal and just so hurtful. And again, I'm just asking you to stop. I will ask you all, on principle and for the sake of good governance, to oppose this. I'd like for our better angels to be brought to bear in these civic efforts. Please vote no on this article.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Mr. Gilbert, are you speaking as a proponent?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gilbert.
Yes, Donald Gilbert, 26 Charles Street. I just want to point out that the images that Amber just showed to us, though there are some rainbows, it's the flags that are put in the classrooms by the teachers. I get it, some flags somewhere, but to me, when it's an adult, it's the administration, it's the union, it's the teacher that's putting it forward, is different from those images that Amber just showed. And to me, it is propaganda. It's a form of propaganda because it's imbalanced. Most people don't see the rainbow, and they see everyone. They just see the LGBTQ community. And I think it's just too much. It's too much. It's a matter of degree. So it's not about acceptance. Gay people in my family, got it, very important, everybody we love, where's the love? But I mean, I just think it's a little bit, we're gone a little bit too far here with that specific iconography and propaganda.
Thank you. Next, we move back to a proponent. I will let you know that there's only a minute 40 left of the proponent, oh, sorry, of the opponents. We're back to the opponents, so there's only a minute and 40 seconds left. I saw you standing here first, so name, address, and you have a...
Hi, Natalie Chase, Old Colony Drive.
A number, please, just so we can look you up.
So this is going to be very quick. I am a graduate of Westboro High School. I already said it, Natalie Chase, street number 10 Old Colony Drive?
10 Old Colony, thank you. That's all I want, thank you.
Sorry, I was trying not to dox myself as to be hate-crowned, but I can do that too. Maybe that's just a my generation thing. I want to address, I am a Westboro High School graduate... I want to address, I am a Westboro High School graduate. I have a younger sister who's still at Westboro High School, and I am just repulsed at the fact that someone would want to take away support for their children, especially when you look at the world right now. I have so many friends and myself that look around the world and all we can feel is misery because of laws, legislation, and people's remarks directed at us with only hatred. And to see Westboro High School, we have so much support here. I have, I was able to explore my own love, my own life here, and my little sister is doing the same thing. I remember after Gibbons, I didn't have this experience at Gibbons, Gibbons Middle School, but my younger sister did, and she came home to me one day with a little pride flag sticker, and she said, Natalie, guess what I had today? This was so exciting. And she was so excited to show me this and see that she was supported, that her friends were supported, and you all, you all being like two people in the room, so to be clear, trying to take that away. And that's not cool.
Please conclude your remarks as quickly as you can.
That's good. I'm very opposed to this. Don't be an idiot.
Okay, all right. Anyone else wish to speak? The proponents have some time left. Anyone wish to speak as a proponent? Seeing none, our time limit, as I'm enforcing it, is up, and we will move to a vote. We have a vote on Mr. Conklin's motion, which was a, where he moved that the town meeting supports a resolution to remove LGBTQ iconography from Westboro Schools. When the light goes green, pressing one is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion. Pressing two is a vote in opposition. Voting is ended. We have 24, 2-4 in favor. We have 3-13 opposed. The motion is defeated. We now turn our attention to Article 35, dealing with ending Westboro Schools' anti-racism initiative.
Point of order.
What was that?
Point of order?
Ah, yes.
I don't know if this is in order, but I would like to make a motion that the remaining articles all be voted on together with one vote.
Okay, I've received that request from many people. Let me explain to you the rationale. First of all, the warrant isn't structured to allow a vote on all of these at once, and also, they're on a very wide variety of topics. And although I could see that many people may vote all one way or the other, the only way that I could do that would be to try to block them together. And then, just as we did with the budget and with the capital articles, I'd have to go through each one, seeing if they were questioned. And my guess is that everyone would be questioned. So my belief is that the most effective way to do this is to just keep our remarks to a minimum and move to a vote. In that way, we've adequately handled the process. But thank you. We now have moved to Article 35. Mr. Conklin, do you have a motion?
Boyd Conklin, A Water Street, to see if the town will vote on a non-biting petition to end Westboro Schools' anti-racism initiatives or take any other action thereon.
Okay, Mr. Conklin, remarks?
Anti-racism is racism.
Thank you very much. All right, we've heard the proponents' presentation. Let's see, I was asked to say that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee voted 4 to 0 to oppose this article. Since it's a school thing, I will ask if the schools want to make any remarks.
Amber Bach, 10 Arch Street. I'll be quick. The article claims that the school committee and Westboro Public School administrations don't have children's best interests at heart. It claims that we are not focused on raising students who are critical thinkers, are responsible, enlightened, or civic-minded, that we are obsessed with race, that we indoctrinate students with leftist ideologies, and that we are catering to an anti-intellectual liberal mob. Those are the descriptors I pulled from the article. If you didn't read it, read it. These claims are insulting and unfounded. They are presented by a person who addresses us as groomers, the term for sexual predators. We have responded to attacks with respect and have provided opportunities and multiple hours provided by your civil servants to meet and address these questions respectfully with anyone who has asked to meet with us. The Westboro Public Schools prioritize a safe, inclusive environment where diversity is celebrated and hate has no place. It takes a lot of work to keep that in place. We are a knowledge-based, skills-based, and values-based district where critical thinking, empathy, and strong skills provide the basis of our educational work. We follow the state's standards and expectations legally for the curriculums we work on. Our students experience an incredibly diverse, busy, and very rich curriculum of choice and experience against core curriculum and required curriculum, a wide array of daily experiences. We do teach about isms. We want our students to understand the belief systems, isms, so that they can speak knowledgeably of them and voice opinions grounded in facts and sourced research. We don't tell them which ones to believe, but we teach them about all of them. I don't see any isms I would remove here. We work from a windows and mirrors approach. We are a community of people from many cultural backgrounds, races, nationalities. It is our duty to teach our students about themselves and others as a way of building trust, understanding, and acceptance. We do teach them that racism is wrong. It is also, by the way, the law. We are not allowed to discriminate on the basis of age, race, color, sex, religion, national origin, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, or any other class protected by law. Those are all protected classes. We therefore have an obligation to teach our students what discrimination and means so that they do not discriminate against others. Our staff is dedicated. They're dedicated to the health and well-being and education of our students. They are public servants. They work tirelessly. We, the school committee and the Westboro Faculty Administration, seek your support in resoundingly defeating this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bach. Any proponents wish, wants to speak in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion? Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, I just, early on, when this started happening to, after George Floyd, to institute something in the schools, we had these, again, these consultants, you know, I mean, these vendors to the school system, to the town. It's just, you know, where's the money? Where's the business? It's just, it's, there's a lot of money there. And I remember going on to a Zoom with one of these anti-racism consultants, and I looked at their biographies and education and stuff. I just, I wasn't impressed with what I saw. And so I just think that a lot of this is kind of just ham-fisted and just kind of clumsy and might actually just do more damage. I know you got to teach it, you got to be, of course, but I just feel like it's not a very precise thing. So let's just agree on that. I also don't see Marxism or communism among the isms.
Thank you. The gentleman who had been waiting, were you going to speak in opposition?
Opposition.
Okay, name, address, and remarks, please.
Del Richmond, 9 John Pratt Circle. Just so you folks understand, woke actually started from African-American English, meaning alert to racial prejudice and discrimination. It's become broader to encompass social inequalities such as racial injustice, sexism, and denial of LGBT rights. I may have missed it, but I didn't see anything about grooming in that language. So just to illustrate how bad this article is, let me cite a few recent court cases on woke-related issues. One court settlement recently blunted the "Don't Say Gay" proposed law. Earlier this month, a federal court blocked another key measure called the Stop Woke Act that banned instruction in schools or mandatory training in workplaces that suggest a person is privileged or oppressed because of their race, sex, or national origism, or origin, rather, excuse me. A federal judge said by restricting people's speech, the law was positively dystopian. Last year, an appeals court ruled it couldn't apply to colleges and universities. That same court recently ruled it couldn't be enforced against businesses either. The court resoundingly rejected the Stop Woke Act as applied to employers and said it was in plain violation of the First Amendment. Four federal judges, including two appointed by Donald Trump, have now blocked that law. In addition, a federal judge temporarily blocked a ban on gender-affirming care for minors. Another judge put a law on hold that would punish businesses that allow children into drag shows. Lastly, a proposal to ban rainbow flags and others with a political viewpoint from school and government buildings also failed.
Thank you.
Final point, all three of the, all of those cases have one thing in common: They all happened in Florida.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion? Okay, seeing none, we have a minute and a half left of opponents, and then we'll hit that. So, or you can, if no one wants to speak, we can take it to a vote. Do you want to speak, or, yes? Yes, since you have time available. Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we still do have freedom of speech in this country, I think. I think it's really rude for everybody to be laughing and clapping and stuff like that. I just think, I mean, it's embarrassing. And John, you made this comment earlier today that you weren't going to allow that. So before this all just spins out of control here, I think we need to put a little tamper on it.
Yep, I agree. Thank you. Yes, so again, your power is your vote. I'm going to ask us all to get through this as quickly as we can and respectfully as we can. Try not to, try not to react, and let's just react through your vote, okay? Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Felicia Batesman, 27 West Street. The only thing embarrassing about this is the bill itself. I think a lot of the people, I speak probably for a lot of the people in this town, that we're tired of these types of crazy bills and these kind of things coming before the Select Committee, before the School Board, before the town meeting. And something needs to change if only 10 people have to sign off for all of us to sit here. My little kids are in childcare, well past their bedtime, as are a whole bunch of other kids, because I want to make sure that we all can vote down this ridiculousness. And it's, that is what is embarrassing. You guys are embarrassing this town by putting this crap on the agenda.
Let's leave personalities out of it, please. No laughing. Thank you. Any other proponents wish to speak? The opponents have one minute left. Name, address, et cetera.
Heather Straz, I live at 98 Milk Street. I actually taught history and Lynn for almost 10 years, which is obviously much more diverse in our community. I have a friend in town whose daughter was called a racial slur on the bus. So this is obviously still an issue in our town. At no point did any child that I taught feel they were racist because of whatever their ancestors did. An important part of history is learning our mistakes and making sure we do not make them in the future. To say that the Civil Rights Acts in the 1960s completely stopped the issues of racism in our country is dangerous and not supported by fact. We need to show people from all backgrounds that we see them, and although we may not be able to, we try to understand the sometimes invisible hurdles they face every day. So obviously, I oppose this.
Thank you. That concludes the opponent time. Any more proponents wish to speak? You've already spoken twice, I'm sorry. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on Mr. Conklin's motion, which was a motion to move that the town meeting supports a resolution to end Westboro Schools' anti-racism initiatives. When the green light goes on, pressing one is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion. Pressing two is a vote opposed. Voting is ended. We have a vote of 23 in favor, 2-3, and 382 opposed. The motion is defeated. I will note that it's now 8:45, babysitting is ending. I know there's some of you want to be here. I just wanted to offer up if you would like, I believe if you can just pay attention with the speaker outside there, to when votes are coming up. If you're willing to forego your right to speak, you can gather your children and quietly try to play in the gym and then come into the check-in area where your voting device should work. But if you do have to leave, please leave your voting device so we don't have to track you down or pay for it. Our motion, our action next comes on Article 36 about resolution about barring gender-affirming care for minors. Mr. Conklin?
I move that the town meeting supports a resolution to bar gender-affirming care for minors in Westboro.
Comments, Mr. Conklin?
No chemical castration, hysterectomy, breast removal, penectomy, castration, vaginectomy for minors. Do seek counseling.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. I have a note here to note that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee at a meeting earlier this year voted 4 to 0 to oppose this article. You'd also like to report out Mr. Walsh?
Nathan Walsh, 3 Matthew Drive, reporting for the Board of Health. The Board of Health voted 3 to 0, all in opposition. The Board of Health believes that these choices are best made by the child, the parent, and their physician.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anyone want to speak in opposition? We don't have to. We can just move to a vote if you'd like. Yes, name, address, please.
Stephen Fairwell, 14 Mayberry Drive.
Just, which number?
14.
14 Mayberry Drive?
Yeah. I just want to say that, you know, this topic can be, you know, confusing or scary to parents that have trans kids. But what Mr. Conklin is talking about as far as surgeries, surgeries don't happen to minors in Massachusetts for gender-affirming care. And I do have a trans child, and they had a year of therapy after they came out to us before we even began hormone therapy. So it's a very long process. It's not like a doctor signing off on it one day and then the surgery the next day. It takes a long time, this therapy involved, for a long time. And my son's happiness has increased dramatically since this whole process started when he was just 14. And now that he's 20, he's a really happy, healthy adult. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. We'll now hop over. Are there any proponents in favor of the main motion that would like to speak? Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, I mean, again, I just think that, well, I've been reading Marion Grossman's book, Lost in Trans Nation. I'm still on the learning curve here about this, and I just encourage us all to read some books on both sides of the debate. I know it's a very personal issue. I sailed for a number of years with a trans sailor in Maine, and, you know, so, but I just, I think that when it comes to minors with all this stuff, and yeah, I guess you have to get to 50 before you kind of have some perspective, but I think that it's very impactful. And with the wrong family life, maybe, whatever that means, that people are not as caring, I think some of these things are really kind of dangerous. These topics, these categories are very dangerous... These topics, these categories are very dangerous for some young people to go down these roads without loving family.
Thank you. Any more opponents who would like to speak? There is no requirement. Uh, yes, can you make your way to a microphone, please? Thank you. Name, address, and your remarks, please.
Robert Gilmore, 35 Water Street, and since it seems to matter, 52 years old.
Uh, that's remembered.
As a member of the town meeting, I'm not here to mandate policy via having my temperature taken. I'm here to help establish, uh, town policy by voting on bylaws, budgets, and as a resident, to vote on candidates for town elections. Uh, I think we all made our feelings clear during the previous town elections. Uh, I'm not here to have my time wasted by temperature-taking. And for those who mentioned that they don't feel the freedom of speech, I'll point out that, uh, I think the residents of this town were very able to express their freedom of speech when they wrote in candidates during the previous election. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any more proponents of Mr. Conklin's motion?
Dom Cabrio.
Are you speaking in favor of the motion?
I'm speaking about the motion, if you want to perceive it to be.
No, I—no, here's the deal. I said I was going to alternate between proponents and opponents. If you concur with Mr. Conklin's motion, then it's your turn to speak, because I—it's the proponents term. If you want to make any sort of nuanced comments but not in support of it, then you'll—then we'll just have to see if there's any other proponents. So which is it, please?
The article has nuances. I'm speaking in favor of one of the nuances.
So you—
Okay?
Okay. Let's see how it goes.
I feel obligated to stand here, because i—in my history, uh, of the United States of America, there was a great politician that said, "I may disagree with what you say, but I will defend with my life your right to say it." That's what America is about. It doesn't matter whether you like this stuff. It matters whether it's legal. It's been—to—to be brought forward. It is appears to have been approved as being legal. So let's just remember what is really happening here. Let me explain what's happening here. There's a lot of articles that occurred today that had proponents of spending, bringing forward their desires and their viewpoints and their, uh, needs, and they had a favorable vote. Fine. Well, this group is seem to have some societal needs and perspectives, and they would like to bring them forward. That is what is going on. That is the format of this town meeting. If you don't like this stuff, change the town meeting format. Change the government in Westboro so that this stuff is filtered out, and it's done on a very business-like format, like to have a town council or something like that, where this stuff is really not available. This is available because you have town meeting that is catering to people's personal desires. This is somebody's personal desire. I might not agree with it. Somebody might agree with it. But it seems to be no worse than somebody's personal desire to have an expenditure that favors their existence, their, uh, path through life, or whatever it is they want that money to be spent for. This is different. This is social. It's, um—it's problematic, because town meeting is problematic, because there's too much self-serving behavior here. And I'm being very real about this. Too much self-serving behavior here. And if you want to eliminate the self-serving behavior here, eliminate the opportunity for it to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabrio. Any opponents want to speak, or do we just want to go to a vote? Proponents, opponents? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Our vote is on Mr. Conklin's motion, which is that he's moved that the town meeting supports a resolution to bar gender-affirming care for minors in Westboro. When the light turns green, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion; pressing 2 is a vote opposed. Voting has ended. We have 24, 2-4 in favor, 367 opposed. The motion is defeated. We now turn our attention to Article 37, an article proposing a resolution to end Westboro's town and school probable future mandates. Mr. Conklin?
I move that the town meeting supports a resolution to end the Westboro Town and Schools' probable future mandates for vaccination, vaccine passports, masking, remote learning, social distancing, business closures, and restricting access.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. Any additional remarks?
This is Rand Paul. Over the last few years, public health experts were wrong about almost everything. If we are to avoid these kinds of catastrophes in the future, we must reform government and rein in out-of-control scientists and their enablers. Anthony Fauci, who wielded tremendous power over many decades, funded dangerous research, lied to Congress and the American people, flip-flopped on many of his prognostications, issued edicts that defied science, and attacked and smeared his scientific critics. His reprehensible behavior reminded me of nothing so much as C.S. Lewis's description of the moral busybody. Of all tyrannies, a tyranny sincerely exercised for the good of its victims may be the most oppressive. Those who torment us for our own good will torment us without end, for they do so with the approval of their own conscience. We, the American people, must not allow bureaucratic experts to endanger our lives, lie to us, or curtail our constitutional rights. Never again.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. Uh, opposition, I guess, was a new voice—oh, sorry, a report from the Board of Health, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Nathan Walsh, 3 Matthew Drive, reporting for the Board of Health. The Board of Health, uh, voted 3 to 0, all in opposition to this. The Board of Health strongly opposes this article, believing that it is not in the best interest of the town. The Board of Health needs to have mandates for vaccination and options regarding public gatherings when needed. Standard health measures are essential for our mission, which is to protect the health and well-being of the citizens of Westboro. The amendment as proposed is sweeping in nature, and any issues changing how we respond to pandemics should be much more narrowly tailored than how it is presented in the warrant article.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Uh, we'll start with a new voice. Uh, you're an opponent, I assume, right? Okay, name and address, please.
Beth Trhune, 19 Adams Street. I am an inpatient healthcare provider. I have been frontline for the last number of years. I work with the most vulnerable of populations in the most critical of moments. I strongly oppose.
Thank you very much. Hang on. Uh, anyone wish to speak in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion? Is that a—you—are you coming down to speak in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kim Koncedine, and I live at 10 Smith Street in Westboro.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, um, is kind of close to the heart. Um, I had COVID in 2021. I almost died. I am not vaccinated. And even if I had died, it is my right to make my own decisions about my medical care and what I want. I am absolutely in favor of this. Every American has the choice to make their own decisions about bodily autonomy for themselves and their children. So I am in support of Mr. Conklin's bill that this should never be about what government puts on us, but about individual rights. Check out Matha and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see. Ms. Spring?
This is also—
I assume you're—you're speaking in opposition, I assume? Yes, okay.
Carolyn Spring, 12 Dear Slayer. This is also very close to my heart for many reasons. In the warrant article, as it's written, the proponents cite the Nuremberg Code as being a reason. The Nuremberg Code was done because of medical mutilation and experimentation of the Jewish people by the Nazis, not to prevent the spread of deadly diseases or those with debilitating side effects. Vaccines are necessary. Vaccines are necessary for our kids who go to school. They're vaccines against polio, measles, mumps, rubella, smallpox, meningitis. It is close to my heart, because I am the mother of a son who treated all those COVID patients in the ICU in a Boston hospital, whose daughter-in-law was an ICU nurse also during COVID, who held the iPads for people to say goodbye to their family members because they couldn't come into the hospital to say goodbye to them. So do not tell me that vaccines are not needed to protect people. They're needed to protect everybody, not just from COVID, but all the other diseases that they protect against. My dad got polio as a young man, because there was no vaccine. He forever was left with a limp and wore a brace on his—on one of his legs for his life. So do not tell me that vaccines are not necessary. They are. They save lives, they save people from side effects, and not to mention the fact that if they come down from the state that this is a mandate that has to happen, then you know what? If the schools don't do it, then we lose funding for the schools for that. So you need to think about the consequences beyond your own selves. You need to think about the consequences for the greater good when it comes to vaccines. Thank you. Oh, and I obviously am against this article.
Thank you. Uh, uh, I'll get to—anyone else? I'll go to her again if—unless there's a new voice in favor of—the proponents motion. Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, so the thing here was that this wasn't a traditional vaccine like the polio vaccine. This was emergency use-only vaccine, a new technology. Um, and so I get where you're coming from, but the truth of the matter is, guys, that the scorecard was not good here, okay? Our leadership failed us, and I don't think that we should tolerate this in the future. We need to have a little bit more flexibility next time.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go to, uh—we'll come back to you for—as an opponent, but right now it's proponent—uh, sorry, it's an opponent, Stern. Are you an opponent to this?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Adadada, 17 Quick Farm Road. As you understand that, you know, COVID was a dangerous precedence for us. Pandemic was not great. We lost millions of people in this world, including in this town. How can we actually stand here saying that, you know, vaccines don't work? Yes, the way you are talking about in the vaccine, yes, they were newer vaccine. Yes, it takes a while for the vaccines to be developed. But we did right for the town. We proposed that the vaccines are needed. As the Health Board said, it was an—in—it was very important, and for any future when there will be a pandemic, we should look for what we can do to—to oppose this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll go back—uh, just name and address again, and then you may begin your remarks.
Kim Koncedine, 10 Smith Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to address, and certainly, um, my children have had many vaccines, so it's not that I am opposed to vaccination. I think this is specifically talking to the COVID vaccine. When I was in Mass General for 10 days unvaccinated, my roommate is fully vaccinated and boosted. She was there when I arrived, and she was there when I left. The vaccines have—do not protect people from transmission, and they do or do not protect them from dying. Obviously, I don't know what my roommate's situation is. Um, I encourage people to get more involved and to read more of the literature on vaccine injury and make a personal choice. I do not want government telling me what to do with my body or dictating to me what my children should do with their bodies. I want to make those decisions for them, and I hope that, as Americans, we can respect that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, any opponents that wish to speak? Are you speaking in opposition? Yes.
Alan Erlich, 6 Garfield Drive. So I want to make, uh, a few comments related both to the, uh, the proposal, as well as some comments that have been made. So as I think many people here know, I was, uh, on the Board of Health with Dr. Walsh throughout COVID. Uh, I was chair for a good portion of that. One of the things we did was try and make sure, in conjunction with John Arnold and others, that we could have town meeting in person safely. To the best of our knowledge, there were no COVID transmissions as a result of town meeting, something that I remain proud of to this day. I heard someone say that, uh, there were problems in how we handled COVID in this town, and I've not heard that before. I want to make clear there was never a vaccine mandate. One of the things we emphasized was a collaborative approach. I believe public health requires the, uh, the goodwill of the population. It's not something that can be forced, and that was the approach we took in this town. There was good, uh, collaboration between the Board of Health, the Select Board, and the School Board. And I thought that, on the whole, things went well here in Westboro. The problem with this, uh, thi—this proposal is the sweeping nature of it, the lack of specificity. If you are upset by some of the things that Dr. Fauci or the federal government did during COVID, this is not relevant to that. The—it—you know, COVID seems to be the backdrop, but look at what's on the screen. I'll give you an example of restricting access that the Board of Health did the year before COVID. We—there were outbreaks of triple E in Massachusetts, and the Board of Health restricted access to the, uh, athletic fields starting half an hour before sundown. This was done to protect the population. This is our job, and we take it very seriously. We—we have never, um—we have never mandated vaccinations. There are vaccination mandates that come from the state, and we—we follow the state rules. That's as, uh, Carolyn Spring said, if we don't, there are consequences to that. So as far as I'm concerned, this—we have a proposal on the screen that is focused on things that happened at a national level and in other places, did not reflect the experience here at Westboro, and I think would unnecessarily constrain us. I'll add one last thing. The idea of mask mandates and closure of facilities didn't start with COVID. If you go back, we have records in the Board of Health. The, uh, flu epidemic of 1918, churches were asked to close, movie theaters were closed. This was standard public health practice. And when COVID happened, and lots of people were dying, millions of people were dying, we relied on standard public health measures. And, you know, did some of them work better than others? Well, in hindsight, it's easy to see what worked and what didn't. At the time we were going through this, we did the best we can, and we had input from people in the community. Many people reached out to me personally. I responded to every single person who did, whether they were in favor of what we were doing or what we opposed. So again, this is dealing with something that really reflects attitudes at a national level, and, uh, I think it unnecessarily constrains the Board of Health from dealing with our local issues as we need to going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Erlich. And that concludes the amount of time available to the opponents. Any other proponents wish to speak? Seeing none, our action comes on Mr. Conklin's motion, who moved to support a resolution that's shown on the screen there. As is common, when the light turns green, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion; pressing 2 is a vote opposed. Voting has ended. We have 26 in favor, 2-6, and 359 opposed. The motion is defeated. We now turn to Article 38, uh, related to senior center preservation. Mr. Conklin?
I move that the town meeting supports a resolution to leave the senior center alone and not move the location.
Remarks, Mr. Conklin?
That would be the location to the 1500 Union Street Multi-Generational Community Center. I find the, uh, senior center in its present location with its present facility wonderful in the woods, and, uh, we're looking at it in a parking lot now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Uh, yes, I—
[inaudible]
Are you—okay, you're speaking on behalf of the Town Board of Committee? Okay, thank you. Mr. Linder?
Guido Lenardo, 189 Ruggles Street. On Monday, March 11th, the Council on Aging voted 7 to 0 to defeat. On Monday, March 11th, the Council on Aging voted seven to zero to defeat this article.
Thank you. Didn't know that was reported. I'm glad you let me know. Anyone wish to speak in opposition, or do we just want to go to a vote? Okay, wait a second. Mr. Caprioli, are you speaking in opposition?
I know, I have a very interesting perspective and support. I have a very interesting perspective and support.
Hold on just a second.
I will.
Anyone definitely in favor of opposition that wants to speak? It's okay to just say no and then, okay. Mr. Caprioli, brief remarks.
Caprioli, 9 Crown Ridge Road. I would like to modify this a little bit. I think we should leave the senior center alone until we've produced a superior product at some other location. I was at the Shrewsbury Senior Center a few weeks ago. Fantastic location, fantastic building, fantastic facilities. It blows Westboro away by comparison. I don't think we should force these people out of the senior center until we've delivered what we've promised, and I think it'll take a lot of money, and I am actually in favor of spending it because that's the way the program was sold. The people at the senior center deserve something fantastic, and don't force them out of their building until you've got something fantastic to put them into. Thank you.
Mr. Caprioli, was that actually an amendment? Or was it just a comment? I just want to know.
It was a timetable.
It was a timetable, okay. So no amendment, okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Don't want to get accused of not doing the process right. Let's see. Yes, Ms. Marshall, are you speaking as an opponent? Yes, okay, yep. And then it'll be the proponents' turn again. Ms. Marshall.
Shelby Marshall, 7 Charles Street, speaking on behalf of the Select Board. There are no plans to force the seniors out of the senior center, and like, as it was presented or suggested, like, onto the street or something. The plan is to do a full engagement process involving, I hope, everyone in this room and beyond, anyone who's watching, to get input on the design of 1500 Union Street, which is at the former Boston Sports Club. We closed on that building, as you know, and we're now the proud owners of it, and now we've got to figure out how to fit it up. We will not, we will only move the seniors into a place that is spectacular. And when you walk into that building, you will be amazed, even in the engagement sessions will be there. The potential for that building is awesome. We should be proud of what this town meeting has supported us to get to this place, and the future for our seniors is very bright, and I'm very excited that they will be in this place, and it will be something that they will be very excited in. I'm honored that I was part of the board to do this, and I'm happy that all of you have been along for that ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Back to the proponents. Mr. Gilbert, are you speaking as a proponent?
Yeah, Donald Gilbert, 26 Charles Street. I just wanted to say, I really think that the senior center where it is right now, the layout and the proximity to the natural setting there is really special. I really like it just the way it is. And I think we heard earlier today, Mr. Schaffert maybe mentioned that seniors are more concerned really about money and taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Ready for a vote? Okay, people seem ready for a vote. When the light goes on, we will be voting on Mr. Conklin's motion to support a resolution to leave the senior center alone and not move the location. Pressing one is a vote in favor of that motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. Voting is ended. We have a vote of 22 in favor, 2-2, and 335 opposed, 3-35. The motion is defeated. We now move to Article 39 regarding golf club preservation. Mr. Conklin.
I move that the town meeting supports a resolution to leave the golf club building alone and repair as needed, with no heat pumps, no conversion of natural gas heating to electric, no electric rewiring for the massive electric heating load, no need to worry about retrofitting the balloon walls at this time, fix the few trouble spots where the roof is currently leaking from ice dams and such, and bring the civic kitchen or similar restaurant back.
Thank you. Mr. Conklin, additional remarks?
No.
No, okay. Yeah.
I wonder if this motion is even appropriate, given the fact that during previous motions regarding this, you voted to inform the city.
Yes, I understand. Yep, okay. Just name and address, please.
Robert Gilmore, 35 Water Street.
Okay, yeah, so the question is, is this even appropriate? Well, first of all, this is just a resolution. The previous, I thought about this, so the previous article was a feasibility study. A vote on this will inform whether these things actually make a big difference to that feasibility study, so, and because it's on the warrant, we're going to act on it. Doesn't mean we have to talk about it, which means we have to act on it. So again, as was pointed out, we have talked about some of these nuances earlier today. Any other proponents wish to speak, or any opponents wish to speak? If we just want to go for a vote? I can't make you talk, and I don't want to make you talk. All right, we'll go for a vote. In that case, our action comes on Mr. Conklin's motion to move that the town meeting supports a resolution to leave the golf club building alone, and then all the other words that are up there. When the, all right, at this time, I don't even want you to think I'm funny, even though deep down I appreciate. Anyway, so when the light turns green, pressing one is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. Voting is ended. Oops, sorry, jumped the gun. Saw him reach. Voting is ended, sorry. We have a vote of 21 in favor, 2-1, and 360, 3-6-0 opposed. The motion is defeated. We now turn to Article 40, dealing with library cost-effective repair, another one that is somewhat moot because we did vote on it earlier today, but again, because it's its own standalone article, we will briefly discuss and vote on it to inform the Library Building Committee. Mr. Conklin.
Boyd Conklin, 8 Water Street. I move that the town meeting supports a resolution to leave the library building alone, repair as needed roofs, windows, carpets, and no heat pumps, no conversion of natural gas heating to electric, no electric rewiring for the massive draw of electric heating. Thank you.
Any further remarks?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Petricelli, in opposition?
Thank you. I'm Bob Petricelli, 6 Francis Drive, and Vice Chair of the Library Building Committee. First, I want to thank all the citizens of Westboro for voting overwhelmingly this afternoon to pass Article 12(c), the library request for $1,178,000 to conduct the next phase of the project, which is design development and the crafting of construction documents and the preparation of all bid documents. This next phase will address the repairs outlined in Article 40, such as roof, windows, carpet, and only some of the repairs to the HVAC system that make the most economic sense, as well as parking negotiations. Contrary to what Article 40 claims, there is no plan to electrify the library. That was an option we considered but rejected due to the high cost. So in conclusion, I urge citizens to defeat Article 40, as it is redundant to Article 12(c) and is now unnecessary.
Thank you, Mr. Petricelli. Anyone wish, or back to proponents, any proponent want to speak in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion? Do you want to speak in favor? No, okay. Do you want to speak in opposition? Yeah, could you just aim the microphone down? Name and address, please.
Yeah, Donna Perrinace, 35 Water Street. This is, I am in opposition to this, but I just want to point out, because it keeps showing up, I have heat pumps. They do not create a massive draw on your electric bill. That's one of the reasons you have them. And so that is incorrect, and it's just bugging me, so I'm pointing it out.
Thank you. It's one of those things the town meeting allows. Any proponents? Anyone wish to speak? Well, back to proponent land now. Seeing none, any more opponents, or are we willing to go straight to a vote? Seems like there's consensus to go to a vote. In that case, when the light turns green, we will be voting on Mr. Conklin's motion about a resolution to leave the library building alone. Voting is begun. Pressing one is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. Voting is ended. We have 19 in favor, 1-9, 358 opposed, 3-58. The motion is defeated. Next on the warrant, we have Article 41, seeking a resolution regarding affordable housing units located equally throughout the town. Name and address, just, I know it's redundant, but name and address, please, and then go ahead.
Boyd Conklin, 8 Water Street. I move that the town meeting supports a resolution that all new affordable housing units in Westboro be located equally throughout the entire town.
Any additional remarks? Mr. Conklin?
No.
Okay, thank you. I had received a request from Mr. Bain to speak on behalf of this article regarding the Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Bain?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Edward Bain, 5 Thomas Rice Drive, Chair of the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust. I will be making an amendment to this current motion. However, as Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, I must state that the Article 41 information in your AFC books is completely false. The statement has absolutely no basis in fact. It is a shame that any petitioner would malign and insult the character and the work of the dedicated trustees who are diligently working to make Westboro an even better community for all. Furthermore, the article information denigrates areas in which affordable housing currently exists, as well as insults the residents of that housing. Next slide. Okay. That being said, I would like to move that the town meeting support a resolution that all new affordable housing units in Westboro be located equitably throughout the entire town to ensure that these units best meet the needs of the individuals and families they intend to serve, and for the overall benefit of the town. As worded, the article is ambiguous and does not reflect the realities of housing production or development of affordable housing. For our projects, we can only build where land is available and where development is financially feasible. Subsidizing private developers only happens when and where they decide to build, and we need to be involved with the pre-permitting. So a developer can decide to develop in any area of town, per our zoning bylaws, there are requirements for them to have a portion of those housing units be affordable. That's out of our control. There is a role for affordable housing in any and every neighborhood in Westboro. Affordable housing also needs to meet the needs of those who need walkable access to stores and services and access to public transportation. As I mentioned, our zoning bylaws require that creation of affordable housing everywhere in town that housing is built with at least 10% affordable, starting with the fifth unit in each development. Our overlay districts have higher required percentages of affordable housing. Our town sets clear guidance on the location and types of housing the town wants and needs. So unlike many of the other articles which we have voted down, I would encourage you to vote in favor of this amendment and the original, if you, next slide, and just remind you that the Affordable Housing Trust was voted into creation unanimously in the fall 2020 town meeting. The reason we're doing this and modifying the article, we're in favor of housing wherever it is feasible and equitable. The important thing is, is that we put out the message by voting in favor of this amendment that Westboro supports affordable housing. If we defeat, if we vote down the original article or motion, what can be done with that is that can be construed or twisted to say, oh, Westboro doesn't want affordable housing throughout the town, and I know that's not the case. So I urge you to vote in favor of the amendment I've made, and then in the subsequent vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bain. We'll hop back to proponents of Mr. Conklin's original motion. Is anyone we wish to speak in favor of Mr. Conklin's original motion? Mr. Caprioli, are you going to talk about a nuance, or are you going to talk about being in favor of Mr. Conklin's original motion?
No, I'm not going to talk about being in favor. I think Mr. Bain was in favor, correct?
You want to talk about Mr. Bain's amendment?
No, I want to, maybe by extension, but I'm not speaking in favor of the proposal, the article.
So you're an opponent of the article?
Yes.
Okay, we're looking for a proponent right now, so.
Okay, I'll just stand here, mind my own business.
Yeah, that's okay, you can stay there. Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, I'm still thinking about Donald Gilbert, 26 Charles Street, Mr. Bain's adjustment to this. I originally thought of this and think that it's important, I mean, you can't mandate people to stay at home and have Zoom class at home and work from home and do all these things on the internet, and then at the same time say, oh, no, all these individuals need to be able to walk to a train to go to a job. Why can't they also work remotely? In that case, why do they all have to be a half mile away? I understand realities, and I understand a lot of the cul-de-sacs are already, you can't do anything there, you can't muscle in and put some units in the cul-de-sac areas of town, but really, it's about spreading this housing throughout the town. So what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Bain, is that it's, you're going to try. That's what I'm hearing. Can I respond?
Yeah, you may respond, Mr. Bain.
Absolutely. We are constantly, we have been.
But try, there's try and then there's do, you know?
Yes, I'm just confirming, yes, we are doing our best to develop affordable housing wherever it is feasible within the town of Westboro.
Okay, hang on. So Mr. Caprioli, you're speaking in opposition to Mr. Conklin?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, Mr. Caprioli?
Caprioli, 9 Crown Ridge Road. As I read the information here, I didn't know we had swamps in Westboro. Am I reading that word right? Anyway, Mr. Bain is really not speaking in a technically accurate manner. Affordable housing is built where developers provide the land. Housing needs land to be on. If the developers locate land to build affordable, that they want to build housing on, and some of it has to be affordable, or maybe all of it, it's where the developers choose the land, that the Affordable Housing Committee doesn't choose the land that developers choose to build on. It is not up to us to go around and deny the opportunity to build affordable housing in one location because we think there's too much affordable housing in that location, and nobody wants to build it in another location. That represents a net loss of affordable housing opportunity. That is irrational and unreasonable. The pursuit of affordable housing should be done on the basis of the desirability of the contractors, of the developers, to build the buildings, not on the town saying, well, we've got too much in one area, find some land in another area. the town saying, well, we've got too much in one area, find some land in another area, and the developer says, I'm not interested in you telling me where to build. Are you controlling my profitability or feasibility of my project? I'm leaving Westborough if you can build your own affordable housing. This makes no sense at all, because it is asking you to put something on a piece of land that you don't have any control of. This article should be defeated, because it makes no sense in the real world where money is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Capioli. I go back to looking for a proponent. You a proponent of, of Mr. Conklin's motion?
No.
Yeah. So anybody in favor of Mr. Conklin's motion? As I said, I would go with, in favor of the original motion. Okay? Okay, seeing none, I'll let you know, the opponents have a minute and 33 left, and I'll choose this woman to hear from a voter rather than Affordable Housing Trust. We will eventually act on the amendment. Don't worry if you run out of deliberation. So, yes, Felicia, I've forgotten your last name again, sorry.
Vaitzman, 27 West Street.
Thank you.
Looking to move the motion to vote.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, we're doing that with a limit. Okay, so anyway, if that's, yes. Still any proponents of Mr. Conklin's motion? Seeing none?
I don't think we've had any debate on the amendment. On the amendment.
Oh, you want to talk about the amendment? Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Well, I want to talk about both. First of all, Mark Silverberg, 7 Weld Street. I would like to defeat the original motion for similar reasons that Mr. Capioli stated. I don't see how, if a developer comes in and wants to convert the old Reliant Building, we would require 20% affordable, but this resolution would say that we couldn't do that because it's too close to Rogers Road, so we would have to deny the application, and we'd probably get sued. So that's just not, it's not realistic. I don't like the amendment. I believe that the affordable, if the Affordable Housing Trust wishes to pass a resolution on equitable housing, they should bring that forward at a future meeting, and I would be supportive of it at that time. But as Mr. Bain said, he agrees with the sentiment of this article, and I don't agree with the sentiment of this article, because I believe that the sentiment of this article is to restrict affordable housing, to put block, blockages to affordable housing, and to prevent us from doing affordable housing, because it doesn't raise quite as much taxes. So I don't believe the sentiment is at all promotive of affordable housing.
Thank you. Back to looking for any proponents of Mr. Conklin's original motion. Seeing none, the opponent side has 30 seconds. I will recognize Mr. Edinburgh.
I'll be very quickly, in a short duration, the Westborough Housing, Westborough Affordable Housing Trust has explored properties and opportunities that we've identified or that have been brought to us in every single precinct within the community, as recently as two days ago, the Glenn Street Arch area, a second developer with land available and a home that they're interested in possibly converting, not just, not just focused on the downtown and East Main Gateway, wherever there's an opportunity. We believe it's our mission to look for the appropriate type of affordable housing to be in the housing mix.
Thank you. And that concludes the seven minutes and a half of the, of the opponent's side.
Are you a proponent?
Are you a proponent of Mr. Conklin's motion?
I'm speaking in favor of Mr. Bain's amendment.
Okay. We're actually, we're done the opponent's side, and that's, since that's not the main motion, we're done. So I'm going to go to a vote on that now, okay? So we've had some deliberation on that. So here's the way this goes. The way it works is amendments get voted on first, and then we vote on the main motion, whether it's been amended or not, the words will depend. So the vote we're going to have now, Mark, if you could put Mr. Bain's motion, amendment back up, we are now voting just in favor of, do you want to vote on this motion amending Mr. Conklin's? Then we'll vote on it once we see how that turns out. So we're voting on, if you're in favor of this amendment, when the green light goes on, pressing 1 is in favor of this amendment. Pressing 2 is in opposition to the amendment. Mr. Bain, do you have a question? Or, oh, oh, did you want to report out? I made a note in the, all right, hang on. Can you just cancel the voting and reset it, please? Sorry. Forgot to check the AFC vote on, because there was an amendment. Mr. McMahon?
Gene McMahon, 227 Flanders Road. The Advisory Finance Committee has voted 7-1-1 in favor of the amendment.
Of the amendment, okay. Thank you. And I'll try to remember to come back to you once we see how this turns out.
I'm sorry.
Yes?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand your response.
Okay, yeah, okay. Can you just give me your name and, and address for the record?
Brendan Broder, 26 Rich Street.
Okay, Brendan Broder, 26 Rich Street. Okay, so let me just explain. So what we're doing right now is we have an option to, for Mr. Conklin's original motion, or we can vote to change that motion to this wording. If we vote in favor of the amendment, the next vote will be to vote whether we want to approve that as the amended main motion. If the amendment loses, we then go to act on Mr. Conklin's original main motion. Okay? Yeah, I know, it's inside baseball. All right, so, so when the green light goes on this time, pressing 1 is, if vote in favor of Mr. Bain's amendment, pressing 2 is a vote in opposition, thus leaving the main motion alone. But we're going to vote on the main motion after this vote. Yes. I'm sorry, what?
Some of the hours, the things are not cleared.
They're not cleared? Okay, can we clear, just, thank you. Can we just do it? We'll do a reset again.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll turn the light off, let them do a reset. Sorry. I know you started and stopped, because I said to.
It's cool.
Okay.
Okay.
So everybody's cleared? Okay. Again, voting has started. Pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Mr. Bain's amendment. Pressing 2 is a vote opposed to the main amendment, to, to Mr. Bain's amendment. So we're voting on the amendment now, and then I'll explain where we go from here once we see what this vote is. And thank you for letting me know that all the devices weren't cleared. Voting has ended. On the amendment, we have 248 in favor, 131 opposed, so the amendment carries. So now we'll give them a second to clear out the system. So now, because the amendment was approved, we are now going to vote on the amended main motion, which means we're voting on whether we want the town to support this resolution or not. By approving the amendment, Mr. Conklin's motion has been replaced with this one. And so if you want the town to vote this resolution, you will vote 1 by pressing yes or voting in favor. If you want the town to not vote on this, to, to essentially not approve this resolution, we will vote no. Okay? Yeah, and report out again. Thank you.
Gene McMahon, 227 Flanders Road. The Advisory Finance Committee has voted 9-0-0 in support of the article.
Thank you. Someday I'll remember to look over to my old table there. All right, are we all cleared out? Are we all set? Okay, so when the light turns green?
No.
No, oh, we're not all cleared out. Mine still says received, for example. Thank you. We'll do, we'll clear it one more time. Okay. Okay, because I, now mine's switched to yes, received, so.
I just rebroadcast.
Okay, all right. Okay, now it's, okay, mine says received. Okay, let's see. All right. When the green light goes on, pressing 1 is, no. You still, okay, what are you all seeing? Are you seeing a particular yes, no, or does it just say received?
Received.
It says received. Okay.
If it just says received.
If it, okay.
And it doesn't say yes or no, then they're cleared.
Okay, so if it just says received but not yes or no, it should be okay. So just, we're going to try the vote. If it doesn't switch to yes or no, hang on, yes, Mr. Silverberg? Your, still says no.
Hit delete. Hit delete on your thingy. Hit delete.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on. Okay, don't press any buttons, okay? He's going to start a vote. That should cycle through and reinitialize, and let's see what happens. If this fails while we deal with it, I'll just take a handing, a standing vote. Okay, mine is cleared. How are we looking now? Everybody looking okay? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now, when the green light goes on, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of the amended main motion, as it appears here. Pressing 2 is a vote opposed. Voting has begun. Voting has ended. We have 303-0-0 in favor and 90 opposed. The, the amended main motion carries to support that resolution. Okay, so now we move on to Article 42, dealing with a resolution about repealing the stormwater tax. Mr. Conklin? Name an address, and then read the motion and make your remarks, please.
Boyd Conklin? Boyd Conklin. I move that the town meeting supports a resolution that the stormwater tax should be repealed.
Thank you. Remarks, Mr. Conklin?
No.
Okay. Do we have an opponent? Yes, get this microphone, please.
Felicia Vaitzman, 27 West Street. Just want to say, we're giving a lot of oxygen to this one person who's put a lot of these articles on the floor, and they keep getting resolutely defeated, as he also did in town elections. So I guess I'm just saying, I oppose this. We've all opposed a lot of these. It's 9-39. Let's, like, just keep opposing him and keep defeating them and move forward and, like, not talk so much, even though here I am talking.
Thank you. All right. Anyone in favor, anyone in opposition, or I'm willing to go to a vote? Everybody wants to vote, seems. All right. We'll hope the machine is cleared out. My device is cleared. When the green light comes on, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Mr. Conklin's resolution, motion. Pressing 2 is a vote in opposition. Voting has begun. Voting has ended. Okay, we have 36, 3-6 in favor, 343, 3-43 opposed. The motion is defeated. We now turn to Article 43, a resolution regarding the public library fireplace room in community use. Is Ms. Squires here? Ah, okay, name, address, read the motion, and then make your remarks, please.
Good evening. Julie Squires, 15 State Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Westborough and the mother of three, three kids, including two teens. I was very sad to hear from some other seniors that are lifelong residents of Westborough.
Oh, sorry, could you read the motion first and then make your remarks?
Okay, but I didn't, I thought no one else was reading articles today, so.
That's okay, yeah, that's okay. The motion comes and then the debate, just, yeah, that's fine.
Article 43, return public library fireplace room to the community. I move that the town meeting support a resolution to move, to have the Westborough Public Library return the front fireplace room to the community use, so it can be used by all.
Thank you. Now make your remarks, please. All right, sorry for the confusion.
So, as I said, I'm a lifelong resident, and I've been talking to other seniors in town who have also been lifelong residents of Westborough, and they've been told they can no longer sit in the bright front rooms of the library. This is, this is often one of the only sources of connection they may have in a day. The library should be open to all ages. Teens are in school 181 days a year until 2:30. So why should residents be blocked from the rooms off the main entrance and not be able to enjoy the beautiful area of the library? The town just purchased an $8 million multi-generational community center with the intention to bring all residents together. The library is also a source of community, so why are we restricting the majority of our community from the rooms off the main entrance of the library building? I realize there are changes proposed with the reconfiguration project scheduled for 2026. I would like to see the front rooms of the library be opened immediately. I brought this citizen's request before you today. As I have tried going through all the channels, I've emailed the library trustees, the director, as well as attended a library trustee meeting. They have suggested that if more people made this request, they might consider it. I thought it would be most efficient to take a town, to take a vote tonight. I would like to see the front library open up to all residents with appropriate seating as written in the warrant. I ask for your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone in opposition first? Ms. Amyat?
Maureen Amyat, 6 Arch Street, Library Director. I'm speaking from the back, because I have a student who would like to speak, and I wanted to stand next to her while she was speaking.
Oh, is it one of the students that I approved earlier?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so we have a student who was approved for permission to speak, and I'll let you yield your time to her, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Nikita Panwar. I live on 6 Pine Chris Drive. I'm a student at the Westborough High School, and I'm also representing the teenagers that use the Westborough Public Library every single day. So this article claims that teens are in school 180 days a year, 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and this actually isn't representative of all teens, since Westborough has a large amount of homeschool teens as well. That being said, after school, every single day without fail, the two teen rooms fill up every single day with teenagers looking to study, hang out with their friends, volunteer, tutor, and more. We are so grateful for the space that we have and the events that we get to hold there, such as trivia, games, college career information, and so much more. In return, our teen volunteers love to give back every single year by helping out with the Haunted Library event, which is almost completely teen-run, the annual library festival, Valentine's Day grams, they help out with song on the lawn, homework helpers, which tutors younger students with their homework, Screen on Green, Tac Help, which helps anyone who needs help on the weekend to come with their devices and get help from teenagers, and so much more. The teens give back, and we're just asking for the space that we already have and the space that we use every single day. So I urge you to vote against this.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Well, hang, you're, I think, Ms. Google, you're offering amendments, so let me just get a proponent to the actual unadorned main motion first. So, Mr. Gilbert, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Google.
Donald Gilbert, 26 Charles Street. I moved to Westborough five years ago, and within the first year, we lost the Civic Kitchen, which was really great. I, I thought it was such a great restaurant. We lost this reading room in the library, and then we lost the seal, because all of a sudden Eli Whitney's this bad guy. So I think that this is one of the important parts, selling points, for, when I came to the town, was to see this nice reading room, elderly and younger and middle-aged people using that room. I think we need to bring it back right away, and, you know, we keep the teens maybe in the back, or in the, in the, in the front, but to the, to the side.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Google, now.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ellen Google, 84 Fisher Street. This came to my attention, and I originally wanted to support the article, but I think there's, I think there's a, a compromise here, and to that end, I have an amendment that I sent you, and I want to propose. So where it says, return the front fireplace room to community use, I would insert, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding vacation weeks. And this would allow, well, that's, that's my motion, allowing library staff to designate any other times as teens only.
Okay, so I, I have that in writing. I don't know if Mark could type it along or not, but I will try to summarize. So, Ms. Google, I'll rephrase what your amendment is, but would you like to provide remarks about the relevance of your, of your amendment?
A little, a little bit.
Thank you.
The amendment does not ask library staff to remove beanbag chairs, stools, or posters. Library staff already have the discretion of rearranging the room as they see fit to accommodate all users during the general public hours proposed in this amendment, or to relocate the teens-only area elsewhere. But the amendment is basically to allow it for. But the amendment is basically to allow it for open public use from eight-thirty, or from, yeah, eight to two-thirty, or when, whether they're open until two-thirty PM weekdays, excluding vacation weeks, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Google. So I will, I'll just repeat what the amendment is. So Ms. Google is proposing an amendment to essentially, after it says, "So it can be used by all," and then just say, and then add, "By, to be used, so it can be used by all from eight AM to two-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, excluding," and I think you left out the word "school vacation weeks." Is that correct? Yes. And essentially, just so those of you don't know, that means there's weeks in December, February, April. And do you intend to include the summer vacation as well? Let somebody else decide. So it'll say vacation weeks, so it'll be the school vacation weeks, so we'll count that as the December, February, and April break. So that's an amendment. I'll entertain discussion on both, and then we will, just as we did before, we'll vote on the amendment separately. So, Mrs. Johnson, you have remarks?
Yes. Mary Johnston, five Sandopon Road. I am the chair of the library board of trustees. I am against both of these articles and amendments, not because I'm not here to listen to what the voters of town have to say, but because the town meeting floor does not have the authority to act on these decisions. And I don't think that town meeting, the town meeting floor should be sidetracked by things that actually aren't governed by town meeting. We have a lot of important work that needs to get done during this meeting, and it shouldn't be sidetracked by that. Having said that, I welcome all feedback, and I invite anyone to a trustee meeting. I welcome you to reach out through our comment box at the library, or to me directly through our email address. I am here, I am listening, and I'm happy to take it back and discuss it at our trustee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnston. So anyway, so that was sort of opposition. Back to a proponent. Anyone else want to support Ms. Squire's original motion? Yes, name and address, please.
Mary Colhane, one Denny Street. I am a proponent of this, and I do like the amendment where we look at an intergenerational space. I've been in town forty-seven years, finally semi-retired, and was looking forward to actually sitting in a nice, comfortable captain's chair in that front room, looking at the magazines that I never got an opportunity to look at while I was working full-time and raising my children. I think having an opportunity to share the space, I understand that this is non-binding, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to welcome our seniors back to that space and figuring out how to share it with our teens, who for the most part aren't there until the afternoon. And for the most part, the elders are there early in the, earlier in the morning. So I hope the library trustees hear us on this, and I look forward to having some time in that space now that I'm able to, along with some of my other senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, that was proponent of the motion. Opponent, Ms. Amiot, would you like to speak for yourself this time?
Yes, I would.
Okay, Ms. Amiot.
Thank you. Maureen Amiot, Sixth Arch Street, library director. I want to just correct a misconception that the space was taken away, and there is no space for adults or seniors to sit in the library. In fact, there is space for people to sit that is comfortable and welcoming and lovely. Our teens needed more space, and it's our teen librarian's job as the teen librarian to provide a safe and welcoming place where teens can be themselves and feel connected to the community. The front section of the library is a beautiful space. However, it's located at the busiest part of the building. When it served as the quiet reading space, staff would regularly be chastised for loud interactions at the circulation desk, and teens who occupied the adjacent space would be scolded for being loud. The quietest part of the building is at the back of the main floor, so it made sense for us to relocate the reading room. We added additional lighting, we installed lamps, and we moved our comfortable seating to the back. In the time that it has been located in the back, I have had zero complaints from adults about noisy teens, and I've had zero reports from teens of being scolded by adults for being too loud. It's a compromise. It's what we can do with the space we have, and it's temporary until the project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amiot. I think that pretty much used, let me just check, that uses up the time of the opponents to go back to the proponents. Ms. Squires, since the proponents have time, would you like to go back and add extra remarks or summarize your position, please?
Just that, you know, it was just recommended that they were connecting the teens to the community, but they're actually segregating them from the community. So to me, it's just common sense that the front of the library, the entrance of the library should be open to all, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you very much. Let me just see. I think we've now exhausted all the time from the opponents. I think the proponents have been heard. So let's put things to a vote. We have before us an amendment that I will read again from Ms. Google, that essentially she is offering an amendment to, after the motion up here that says, "So it can be used by all," to add extra words to constrain that a bit, to say, "So it can be used by all from eight AM to two-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, excluding school vacation weeks." So that's, just like we did before with Mr. Bain's amendment, we're now voting on that amendment, and then depending on whether it gets amended or not, we'll then take a vote on what is, will become the final main motion, whether it's amended or not. Okay? So when the light turns green, this is voting on whether you wish to amend the main motion. If you are in favor of Ms. Google's language, to add the words at the end, "from eight AM to two-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, excluding school vacation weeks." If you're in favor of that, press one. If you're opposed to that, press two. Voting has ended. We have one hundred and forty in zero, one hundred and forty, one four zero in favor. We have two hundred and thirty-one opposed. The amendment fails. In that case, we now move to the original main motion, not amended, which, as Ms. Squires read, she's moving that the town meeting supports a resolution to have the Westboro Public Library return the front fireplace room to community use, so it can be used by all. When they've cleared the things out, and when the green light goes back on, pressing one is a vote in favor of exactly this motion, pressing two is a vote in opposition. And as been reminded, these are non-binding, they're just sense of the meeting votes. Voting has started. Voting has ended. We have a vote of sixty-six in favor, six-six, three hundred and twelve opposed. The motion is defeated. We now turn our attention to warrant Article forty-four, dealing with establishing an opt-in process for sex education. Is Ms. Reynolds here? Ms. Reynolds, name, address, and please make your motion.
Sure. Susan Reynolds, fifty Upton Road. This is Article forty-four. I move to pass over Article forty-four.
Okay, Ms. Reynolds, would you like to offer any rationale for why you think the voters should pass it over?
Town meeting is, is not the spot to have this debate with limited time.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. New motion, Mr., I got to learn to get my peripheral vision and lighting over. Mr. McMahon.
Gene McMahon, two-twenty-seven Flanders Road. Advisory Finance Committee voted nine-zero-zero to recommend the town pass over Article forty-four.
Thank you. And while I'm doing that, Mr. Keough?
Sean Keough, five Yorkshire Circle. The select board votes five to zero in support of passing over this article.
Thank you. Now, is there any discussion? Seeing none, your vote to pass over means the town meeting will take no action on this article, which is one way to dispose of it without having a lengthy debate. When the green light goes on, voting will begin. Press one if you are in favor of passing over, and press two if you are opposed. And if the opposition wins, I'll tell you what happens next. Voting has ended. We have three hundred and fifty-three, three-five-three in favor, twenty-nine opposed. The article is passed over, no action is taken. We now get to the penultimate, what I believe is the penultimate article, Article forty-five, establishing a town baby award. Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Moderator, Donald Gilbert, twenty-six Charles Street. I move this article forward for vote. Article forty-five establishes townie baby award. I move that the town meeting supports a resolution to establish an ongoing taxpayer-funded award to encourage residents of Westboro who were born themselves in Westboro to start families and to have children with an award of a thousand dollars per child. I have some remarks.
Yes, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay. I define townie to mean any person of any gender, sex, race, religion, sexuality, and so on. I'll say it again. Of any gender, sex, race, religion, sexuality, and so on, in any town, by the way, I think that this would be great if it was adopted in other locations, who has, of any kind of predominant whatever, who has grown up in a town or municipality or neighborhood who likely has a parent or parents who also grew up in a town or municipality, and they live there now. As a descendant, I can, I'll go over that again if you want. As a descendant of Massachusetts, townies from other towns in the Commonwealth, specifically in Essex County, I think that here in Westboro and throughout the state and perhaps the nation, that there is a group of society and an essential element to our local culture who are overlooked, townies. Like many people in Westboro, I have been a transient in most of the communities where I have lived, places such as Houston, Texas, New York City, towns in New Jersey, in Maine, Connecticut, Indiana, down the Cape, here in Massachusetts, and neighborhoods in Boston. I have benefited tremendously from something we often take for granted, local knowledge generously provided to me by my new neighbors about all sorts of things. Where's the best pizza or coffee? Who's a good plumber or mechanic? Which areas to avoid during rush hour, or when to move my car during a snowstorm? But culturally and historically richer things, too. Like, oh, yeah, well, they built the school there because that used to be the farm closest to downtown. Or those backyards are always wet in the spring because there used to be a small stream back there. That road is named after the pond where they used to cut blocks of ice, et cetera, et cetera. That kind of stuff. When I was, when was the last time you gazed at the beautiful hundreds of years old stone walls in town and thought about how much work and know-how went into building them? I'd like to share a quote from Howard Zinn. "It is possible, reading standard histories, to forget half the population of the country." The explorers were men, the landholders and merchants, men, the political leaders, men, the military figures, men, the very invisibility of women, the overlooking of women is a sign of their submerged status. I think in Westboro, among all the other groups who we pay attention to, that townies have submerged status. We talk a lot about being a welcoming community, a community that encourages diversity. We talk a lot about our new Americans and the diversity of our transplanted families. But I think that we take for granted and have forgotten our Westboro townies and how they have enriched the town. Well, I think we should consider doing something about it, no matter how small. This, shall we say, cultural blind spot is made worse by the fact that most young people who grew up in a town are not able to move back here and start families here if they so choose because of the dramatic increase in the cost to live in Westboro, as those same costs have increased in other towns and municipalities. According to UNESCO, United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, culture is defined as the set of distinctive spiritual, material, intellectual, and emotional features of a society or a social group that encompasses not only art and literature, but lifestyles, ways of living together, value systems, and so on.
Are you almost done? Just, it's because the time's up, I just wonder if you're almost done. How much more do you have?
Let me see here.
Okay, okay. Tell you what, I'll let you come back and finish it after I hear from an opponent, okay?
Okay, sure, sure.
That's where the rules, so three and a half minutes, so I can come back. Now, I had received a request, as we do for presentations, I know there's other people standing up there, I'd received a request from Mr. McGrath. Is he here?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. I had received a request for an opposition, but before you go, I also was asked to report that the Diversity Inclusion Committee met earlier this year and voted four to zero-zero to oppose this article. So with that said, Mr. McGrath, name, address, and then you may make your remarks.
John McGrath, ninety-five Bowman Street, and proud father of three townie babies. I have wonderful memories of playing on Corrugated Papers Little League team, skating on the rez with my friends and family, and of course, the occasional family trip to Yulman's. The Westboro I grew up in was vastly white, and I'm not just talking about the winters. My kids grew up in a very different town in many ways, including have many, having many more opportunities for friends from varied places and backgrounds, and learning firsthand about cultures and customs, very different from those of our Irish and Italian and Catholic family, traditions I'm also quite proud of. They're better people for it. They've learned that the, quote, "shared values of the community" referred to in this article, have nothing to do with where you were born, but much to do with the content of your character. In nineteen ninety-nine, my wife Jen and I bought our house a half mile down the street from my parents. Three months later, we welcomed our first kid, and we had two more by July twenty-third. We were young, I don't know what we were thinking. Our house was a dumpy fixer-upper, which is now less dumpy, but still a fixer-upper. We made the difficult economic decision for Jen to leave her teaching job to focus full-time on our family. As I'm sure many of you know, an extra three thousand dollars would have helped a lot with diapers, formulas, onesies, and bedroom furniture. Maybe we could have installed a couple of new windows. I think we would have qualified for the money proposed in this article. But would we, or maybe we still do? One reason I oppose this article is that, as written, it makes little sense. The article states that the award would be granted to those who were born in Westboro, something which is largely obsolete. My research found a couple of kids born in Cars on the Pike and an unexpected early baby delivered in a doctor's office, but most, including me, were born in nearby cities, not here. So does born in Westboro really mean raised in Westboro? Maybe, but not as written. And if so, how long do you have to be here to qualify? What if someone wasn't born here but moved here as an infant? Or was born here, left as an infant, and returned at age thirty? Is it retroactive? Where's the money coming from? Even if we could cut our way through the poor wording, incompleteness, and red tape that binds this article, it's simply unjust. Many of our newer neighbors who wouldn't qualify as townies came to America for the same reasons many of our ancestors did years ago, improved jobs and educational opportunities, and the hope that they could make their kids' lives a little better than their own. Most likely, many young families who would need the money, most, would not qualify. The others who don't need it would qualify. The townie babies award would do nothing but drive people apart. We can still value Westboro's shared values and memories of the past, which were born of people pulling together as a community while not seeking out ways to further separate our citizens economically and culturally. Rather than looking only to the past for shared values and memories, we should also look forward to ways that we can embrace each other's customs, learn from each other, and create an updated set of shared values and memories that we can continue to be proud of. Maybe I'm asking too much, but I'd rather ask too much than too little. I'd rather hope that we can come together as a town and look forward than look backwards to ideas like forty-five, Article forty-five, that foster division. Maybe at the next town meeting, we save everyone some time and propose an article saying that only people born in Westboro can propose articles for consideration.
Please.
If that, if that were the case, I'd be sitting at home watching hockey and sipping whiskey right now. Of course, I'm kidding, but mostly. Let's not embarrass our town. Let's not look at ways to thrive together and not live apart. Let's look at ways to get to know our new neighbors, not to make them feel ostracized. I recommend to know on this article, it makes no sense, it would foster division, and Westboro deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Uh, please. Okay, at this point, Mr. Gilbert, would you like to provide additional remarks, since you ran out of time last time? I ask you to be respectful and quiet for fifteen minutes. That's all I ask, please.
Yeah, so subjective culture, according to UNESCO, refers to the experiences of the social reality formed by society institutions. In other words, the worldview of the society's people. As we further our intercultural skills, we need to continually remember not only how multifaceted and complex culture is, but also how much it is ingrained in our identity and sense of self. According to the Mass Cultural Council, culture plays a major role in the formation of creative, productive, independent-minded young people in Massachusetts and indispensable of creative, productive, independent-minded young people in Massachusetts, an indispensable part of the well-rounded education. Culture creates citizens who are open and creative, ready to succeed in a globalized, increasingly competitive world. I think that our young Westboroans benefit from living among townies, that it has a grounding effect that is essential for their futures. According to the mission and values statements of Westboro Connects, "Westboro connects as a community connector with a mission to help build a thriving, connected community where everybody belongs. By listening and responding to the needs of the community, we connect people to resources and to each other. We foster meaningful relationships through events, collaborative partnerships, and communications, and so on." I think, Mr. McGrath, it's interesting, most people didn't, weren't fortunate enough to have that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm pointing him out, but to have that kind of upbringing. Most people in this country, you know, get out there, guys, go visit other parts of the country. And, you know, so that's wonderful to have that to leave from, right? But the truth is that for many of us, we really value, who are real true transplants, we value locals in ways that I don't think that you, I think that you take for granted.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Another opponent wishes to speak. I think we have a new voice. Name and address here. I'm assuming you're an opponent?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Jeff Spofford, 15 Olden Colony Drive. One speaker already spoke about the message that was sent, I think, to these proponents through the town election, and I share that, especially since I was the write-in candidate who was written in, and I think I thank many of you here today for going to the town elections and writing in on that day, and sending a message to the proponents that the articles that we've seen tonight, including this Townie Baby Award article, were not well-received, and that may be an understatement. As I've watched tonight, though, these articles, which I've perceived as incredibly divisive, at times hateful, have brought this town together in a huge number tonight, and I couldn't be more proud of the townspeople of Westboro, watching the numbers that come to vote these articles down repeatedly. The Townie Baby Award, and I went to the special meeting of the Select Board and the Advisory Finance Committee, was perceived as a joke initially. It was an embarrassment to the town. It was picked up by Boston.com, and Westboro looked terrible as a result of it. It's an article that really what it does is it takes what is a very white population, and it was whiter when we were younger, and now the generation that would be having these so-called townie babies would be all white. And when they encouraged one group of people years and years ago to have babies, to have babies that might be pure and white, that was the white Aryan nation back in the 1930s in Germany. That's what this felt like to me when I read the Townie Baby Award, that it was both a joke and it was frightening. So I urge everybody to come together and vote against this Townie Baby Award, to send a message that it is hateful in many respects and a joke in others. And again, I thank all of you who came out on the write-in campaign to send a message for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please, hold it. Any other proponents of Mr. Gilbert's motion? We've pretty much run out of the seven and a half minutes of opponents. So with that said, if there's no proponents want to speak, we'll go to a vote. Let me just reset these things here. So when you vote, as always, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of Mr. Gilbert's motion, pressing 2 is a vote opposed. When the light goes on, voting will begin. Voting has begun. Remember, pressing 1 is a vote in favor of this motion, pressing 2 is a vote in opposition. Voting has ended. We have a vote of 10 in favor, 1-0, and 373. The motion is defeated. As we move now to the final article, I just want to take a moment to reflect on what we've done here. I know that if you haven't, if you didn't see my remarks to the Select Board and the Advisory Finance Committee about the compromise for the 15 minutes and why it came to be, I want to remind us, and this pertains to the town meeting remarks, too. Although town meeting has its faults, I'd like to reflect on the fact that there aren't many opportunities for almost 400 of us here to pretty respectfully sit through a difficult conversation, and then at the end of us to essentially be able to state our position, whether it was for or against it. And so I do want to reflect on the fact that this does provide a unique opportunity, and I want to thank everyone for being here, and I want to thank you for keeping it respectful. I know we could have done better in some parts, and we'll continue to do that. And although there may be better ways at some point to do these things, we are here as the town legislature, and we are the government, and our First Amendment provides an opportunity to petition the government to redress grievances, and I believe the town meeting law is inspired by that. And although it may have been unwelcome, or unfortunate, or it may have been inconvenient for us to have this difficult conversation over the past two hours, I want to recognize that it is part of our self-governmental duty here, and we will, all of us will continue to strive to find better ways to have these conversations. But I also want to thank you and congratulate you for having this difficult conversation and getting through it, not only tonight, but getting through the whole town meeting tonight. And with that said, we'll move to the final article on the warrant, Article 46. Ms. Reynolds?
Article 46, Establishing No Political Bias Education Teaching Standard. I move to pass over Article 46.
Ms. Reynolds, would you like to give your rationale again?
As with Article 44, town meeting is not, we've decided this is not the time to have this discussion, debate.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Any discussion on Ms. Reynolds' motion to pass over, the action of which is to take no -- first, Mr. McMahon, report of the AFC?
Gene McMahon, 227 Flanders Road. The Advisory Finance Committee has voted 9-0-0 to recommend the town pass over Article 46.
Okay. Mr. Keough, Select Board?
Yes, Sean Keough, 5 Yorkshire Circle. The Select Board votes 5 to 0 in support of passing over this article.
Thank you. I don't see any discussion. In that case, our action will come on the motion to pass over when the green light goes on. Pressing 1 is to pass over. Remember to turn in your voting devices if you're voting while you're leaving, so we don't have to track you down. Some of us have to vote to be here to dissolve the meeting, so at least Debbie and I will do it alone if we have to. Okay, the vote on passing over is 320, 3-2-0 in favor, 20 opposed. The motion to pass over carries. Mr. Keough?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. First, may I say thank you for your efforts this evening.
Thank me by finishing.
I move that we dissolve the March 23, 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
We have a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. All those in favor, hold up your voting devices. Any opposed? Seeing none, we will declare that a unanimous vote. The March 2024 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Westboro is dissolved. Thank you very, very much.